If I can get everyone to take their seats. I'd like to remind everyone to turn off any pagers and cellphones that you have on you. Okay, we're going to reconvene this meeting from a meeting that we had early this evening in the closed session. I'd like to report that there were no actions taken in closed session. Let's see. invocation, Chaplain Tony Durham. Please stand, please, and take off your hats if you have any head covers.
Father, we want to thank you for all the blessings that you have given to us, like being able to pray and honor our flag as we honor the men and women who have fought every day to protect it and us. Father, we pray that you would stand alongside our military, especially their families, because both have sacrificed so much. Father, we are blessed to have the city council and the staff that truly care about our community that we live in and our way of life. We appreciate the council's work. It's endless in their attempt to find ways to improve our city. Lord, we ask that you watch over the first responders, give them peace as they respond to calls that truly would traumatize most of us. Our police and fire have endured so much, and yet, when you talk with them, there's always a positive heart and a smile. Yes, Father, we are truly blessed. Thank you for all your love. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Before Chaplain Tony Durham gets out of the room, I'd wanted to make a quick message and a thank you, sir, for my understanding is for the Every 15 Minutes program that's been brought to our high schools for the last eighteen, nineteen years. You've been heading that up, and this last year was your sign-off year, as I understand. Is that correct?
If there was a God.
Anyway.
My granddaughter goes to Cabrillo, and she'll be a senior or will probably be in the program. And if that's the case, then my wife and I can't do the program.
Very well. I understand. I wanted to thank you very much for the program that you've brought to Cabrillo and to Lompoc High Schools. And I was able to attend the event this year at Lompoc. It had a very gripping impact on me being involved for the first time, and I'm sure on the kids and just seeing the silence among the students in the stands as that comes across. So I thought it was appropriate not only to thank you very much for your leadership in this, but I wanted to take a quick few minutes, if we could, and just show some highlights from the event. So if you all don't mind joining with me, thank you, Chris.
As we're waiting on that, there's seats available up front. There's about a dozen seats up here if anyone wants to take a seat.
Thank you, Chris.
There was an accident at Alonpol High School. Can you tell how many vehicles involved?
I think there's two.
Other injuries?
There's a lot of blood.
Okay, work it out, there's one more.
Somebody help me!
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
If I could have just a moment.
Tony, come on up here.
Why don't you come on up?
Even though we can hear you from back there.
I figured my voice would carry. This was our sixteenth year doing the program between Lompoc and Cabrillo. And since we started this program, prior to the program, we were losing one to two students a year, every year. Two thousand and one was the last student that we lost between prom and graduation, and that's the target window of this program. So...
Well, we thank you.
Couldn't do it without the city. Everybody you saw in that video volunteered their time: law enforcement, paramedics, EMTs, sheriffs, our fire department, our local police department, the city itself, all the businesses, tow companies, the mortuary, to the hospital was phenomenal. So it's not a one-man job. It takes multiple entities to do the program. And I just want to say, God bless Lompoc.
Thank you very much for your leadership in that and for the lives saved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. Mayor, also, if I might, as part of my report, obviously, the council chamber is fairly full with people that appears might be interested in the motorsports park project. And after Thursday night's action by council, I know there's been a lot of dialogue, discussion, and information flying around. Some of it is misinformation or disinformation. So I wanted to take just a couple of minutes, if I could, to make sure some facts out there that are indeed facts, to clarify the issue. First of all, the action that council took was to deny a request to change the memorandum of understanding between the city and the foundation, and by doing that, to avoid creating an additional $140,000 of city funds at risk for the project, over and above the $123,000 that the city already has at risk. It instructed staff to discontinue its work on the project. What council did not do was kill the project. I've seen things in print that called it "the kill vote" or things like that. Didn't kill the project, nor has it presented or instructed me to present to the foundation any demand for the $123,000 that's already owed to the city. Did want to point out that the staff report, as it was written for Thursday night's motorsports park item, was accurate at the time that it was published. And indeed, there was additional information and changing information to happen from the time the report was published, and we have to publish in advance by law. There was new information that was developed and came into being from the time of the publishing till the time that staff presented its report on Thursday night. And staff presented an update of all relevant information at that meeting. So I cover this because there's been an allegation that council did not have before it to consider all the updated information, quite the opposite. Staff presented, council had available, and carefully considered all the relevant facts. Actions, some of the actions that have occurred by the foundation since Thursday night appear to have validated some of council's action to some extent. I'm really concerned over reports I've been having from multiple participants within the foundation, project participants, about impending solvency of the foundation being named by the leadership and what its impact might be on other parties and other projects within the community. Obviously, the foundation's a separate entity from the city. We don't have oversight. We, the city, don't have oversight of the foundation or its internal accountings or operations. So it's hard for me to speak with certainty what those impacts would be, but certainly, from my observation standpoint, I can't see why council's actions, limited and described as they are here, how that would have any possible impact, let's say, for instance, on a fallen warriors project or on a bike skills project or anything else, unless there's been some commingling of funds or something within the foundation. I don't believe there has been, but I don't have a way of knowing. I just certainly hope there hasn't been. That pretty much wraps up. I could probably go into hundreds of issues that I've heard, but I just wanted to hit those few highlight points so that we don't take too much of your time that's not scheduled. I know you've got a lot of other things scheduled tonight, but I just sort of wanted to correct the record on some of those most basic and significant issues. And if we need to, we can ultimately respond or react to other disinformation, misinformation that's out there, just trying to keep the record straight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we're going to go to public comment on the consent calendar. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Consent calendar consists of issues that are normally considered routine and will be approved by one motion and a second by a council member, unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any member choose to pull an item?
No.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No, I was going to make the move, we accept the consent calendar.
Okay. If we can have a second?
I'll second it next.
Okay, any discussion?
No, won't worry about it.
Okay. I just have one discussion. On item number four, it's concerning the weed abatement nuisances. If staff could also possibly, in conjunction with this, contact Caltrans with the weeds that are growing to the entrance of our city, both on 246 and 1, if these were properties inside the city limits, they'd be on our list as well. So possibly contact Caltrans. Any other comments? Dina, yes?
We can make that contact for you, no problem.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we vote? Okay, and that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to staff presentations. We're going to have staff introduce several new city employees, starting with Assistant City Manager Theresa Calavan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and the community. It is a great pleasure for me to introduce our new Community Relations Manager, Public Information Officer, Samantha Scroggen. Samantha has been a marketing and communications specialist with Dignity Health for the last several years, and prior to that, she was a staff writer for the Santa Maria Times. She has her bachelor's in journalism from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and we're very pleased to have her join us at the city. So please welcome Samantha.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the warm welcome. The city's been so great to me, and I'm just really privileged to be here and serve the city. So thank you so much.
Teresa, anyone else?
Utilities Director Larry Bean would make the next welcomes.
Good evening. I would like to welcome two new employees who will be running our electrical division for many years to come, I hope. I'll start with our new Electrical Utility Manager, Teekan Singh. Come on up. Teekan graduated from the University of Sacramento, Sacramento State, in electrical engineering. He's been working the last few years in water resources up in Roseville, and he's come down to join us and run our electrical division. He is a registered electrical engineer in the state of California, and he shortly will be receiving his master's degree in electrical engineering from Sac State. We are really happy and honored and lucky to have him come visit us.
I'm very glad to be here, and thank you for a warm welcome.
Next, I'd like to introduce Manny Mora. Come on up. He is our Electric Utility Engineer. He's from Santa Maria, California. He just graduated in January, or end of December, from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in electrical engineering. He was an intern with us for several months before we hired him full-time. Again, we're very lucky and happy to have Manny with us.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I've had the pleasure to help some of you in the counter, and I hope to keep doing that in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's it? Okay, now we're going to move on to oral communications. If you... Oh, one more. One more? Ah, yes, okay. Thank you. Yes, we have Lompoc City Safety Committee. Okay, the Lompoc City Safety Committee has developed the Above and Beyond Award Program where employees were nominated by their peers for actions above and beyond their work tasks on a quarterly basis. The nominees and individuals that made the nomination will be recognized tonight for the second and third quarters of 2014 and 15. Bob Wetzel, Maintenance Supervisor for the Water Utility, serves as the 2015-16 Central Committee Chair. He'll announce the 2015-16 Above and Beyond Awards. When the awardees hear their name, if they want to come forward to be recognized. Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you, Mayor, council, staff, and citizens of Lompoc. Good evening. My name's Bob Wetzel. I'm the Fiscal Year 15-16 Chair for the Central Safety Committee, and I get to announce every quarter, this is the second and third quarter, the awardees for Above and Beyond. What's neat about this award is this is nominated from the peers, people that work with these individuals, and they feel that they've done something that's a little bit above and beyond their normal jobs. So the first nominator was Mike Gonzalez and Keith Quinlan, and the awardees are Peter Almata and Jack Doty, Solid Waste Collections. I don't know if they're here. Peter Almata and Jack Doty are recognized for their Above and Beyond action when they assisted a City of Lompoc resident who fell from her bicycle at the intersection of North V and Central. Their actions reduced possible injury averting a possible automobile accident and provided aid to a citizen in need. The second award was nominated by Lorenzo Gonzalez, and the awardees are Gustavo Lopez and Ernesto Lemus Jr. Streets. Gustavo Lopez and Ernesto Lemus Jr. are recognized for their Above and Beyond action when they assisted in traffic control and the movement of a stalled vehicle out of traffic on East Pine and H Street. Their actions provided aid to a citizen in need and reduced traffic congestion and hazards. Third awardee is nominated by Lee Eddy, and the awardee is Michelle Davenport at the library. Michelle Davenport is recognized for Above and Beyond action when she recommended a modification to computer wiring at the library to reduce hazards for the City of Lompoc library computer users. The next awardee is nominated by Gail Greer, and the awardee is David Pateri in the landfill. David is recognized for his Above and Beyond action when he recommended the placement of "keep out" signs on the fence at the water basin at Avalon and Olive Street. His actions provided notice to protect citizens from hazards due to rain accumulation at the basin. The next nominator was anonymous, but it was awarded to Armando Zapata and Bobby Garcia in the Water Division. Armando and Bobby witnessed an automobile accident at La Parisma Road. Armando called 911 for emergency response while Bobby checked on the accident victims to see if they required medical attention. Hey, there's Bobby now. Armando and Bobby then moved the vehicles out of the roadway to reduce any further hazards. They weren't on site until fire and ambulance response arrived. The next awardee and nominator was Dirk Ishiwata, and the awardee is Darrell Thomas Facilities. Darrell Thomas is recognized for his Above and Beyond action when he realized that the stair covers at the police station were cracked and created as a trip hazard. He hung signs and initiated an emergency work order to have facilities maintenance, repair, and remove the hazards. Joe Kavanaugh nominated Dory Sykes in Human Resources. Dory reviewed and requested parking lot curb painting to reduce the congested parking and hazards when cars are parked in the access lanes. Streets Maintenance and Facilities did a review and repainted the parking areas to reduce congestion and possible injuries to pedestrians in the parking lot outside of City Hall. Joe Kavanaugh also nominated Caesar Balaro and David Patera in the landfill. Caesar and David are recognized for their Above and Beyond action when they provided traffic control and emergency response to a traffic accident at Olive and V Street near Migalito Elementary School until police and fire first responders arrived. And the last, the Central Safety Committee has nominated and awarded Facilities. Facilities Maintenance is recognized for their teamwork and efforts to maintain a safe workplace, respond to repairs, work requests, and safety issues. So those are the second and quarter nominees.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're on communications. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you may want to wait till the agenda is called, that agenda item is called. I'm assuming there's quite a few people that wish to speak on the motorsports park. Could I see a raise of hands, people that want to speak on the motorsports park? Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to give you two minutes tonight instead of three minutes. So go ahead.
Mayor, most of those people have less than 30 seconds to say, so I appreciate if you'd give me the three minutes because I'm covering the ground on this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. First, with regard to the city administrators' comments at the prior council meeting when this project was discussed, there was numerous discussion about the fact that the foundation would have to repay the whole amount. The foundation is a single corporation, and although we have various committees within the corporation, each of which has its own checking account and manages its own funds, we are a single corporation. So if there were demands made by the city against the corporation, it could be against all of us, therefore the concern. Secondly, I think another major concern is that the council's action last week unfortunately caused the EIR work to cease with about three days left. And those of us who have spent five years working on it would surely like to know what that document says. So a few more things have changed since the last time we talked, and I wanted to share them with you this evening. As most of you know, we received an email today from Sixto Fernandez of State Parks, and it had the amount that we would actually owe in a grant match, which was $101,504 for CEQA and NEPA, plus $7,690 that would be for the drag strip. Additionally, if the foundation had to carry the entire burden of the airport master plan, that is currently estimated at $73,000, that would be $182,000, substantially less than the $270,000 that was discussed at the workshop. To the city administrator's point, there are a lot of changing things in this. There were probably more things we didn't know than we did know. So as of today, we have raised all of the funds to cover the $109,000 between the CEQA and NEPA and the drag strip share of the NEPA. And at the bottom of the stack, you'll see a $20,000 cashier's check, which was tendered to us with the understanding that if the council canceled the program, we would not deposit the check and we would return it. So going forward, the only thing that we have to raise money for would be the $73,000 for the airport layout plan. And you recall from the memorandum of understanding that the city council, or the city staff, is to work with the foundation to find funds if possible. Also, with regard to city liability, because we now have all of the funds for the NEPA and the CEQA, as opposed to the $120,000 liability that was discussed in the past, the only liability would be the $73,000 if we defaulted on that. And as you can see, we're pretty good at raising money. So by moving forward, you would reduce the risk to the city by $47,000, and you would also have the opportunity to draw $43,000 in non-specific funds, the indirect cost funds.
Want to wrap it up?
That happens to be my end. Thank you.
Okay, so the rest of you, if you want to line up, someone that has to speak, and we can give them each two minutes.
My name's Carl Creel. I'm resident of Lompoc, chairman of the Motorsports Committee. In light of the new information, in light of the fact that even the nice presentation that Tony Durham did, it shows the need for this project. You can see the desire of the community. When I spoke last Thursday, I mentioned that the council needs to address the desires of the whole community, not just the vocal select few. So it didn't appear that happened. In fact, in the court of public opinion, it appeared your minds were made up before you ever walked in the chambers. That sends a bad signal to the community. If you're prejudiced against this project, maybe you shouldn't be voting on it. But nonetheless, things have changed, and due to those changes and the fact that this is wanted by the community, I ask the council to reconsider your vote from last Thursday so we can move forward. The people in the community want to see this EIR. I mean, all the concerns that they've raised, all the fear mongering, I think would be alleviated if they see the details, because that's been the fact, that they've been complaining because there's either no information or misinformation. So the community deserves the right to see this EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Quinn Leester. I live in the City of Lompoc, and I'm here to support the motorsports park and ask the council to reconsider their decisions last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Ruth McKenna. I live in the City of Lompoc. I live in the City of Lompoc, and I support the motorsports park. I am asking for some of the city council members to reconsider your last week's vote. It seems no matter what any given person or organization is trying to accomplish, there's always a mountain to climb. Well, I feel that we are at the top of our mountain, and it's time to start listening to the majority of people who want the motorsports park to happen. I understand that all voices have to be heard, so please keep in mind that there are more motorhead people that would love to see this motorsports park happen than people that don't want the project to go through. Some of us were in Santa Barbara this past Sunday and sold forty-two tickets, yay, and at fifty dollars a ticket, so I thought that was like pretty awesome. I was amazed how many people still believe in us and was very happy to hear that we are still pressing forward. Now I would like to ask to see how many of the city council people up here have read and understand our MOU. Can I see a show of hands, please?
Actually, we're not going to do that right now, so just go ahead and finish your discussion.
Why not?
Because we've all read it.
Have all of you? Has everybody read it? The MOU?
Okay, we're not going to accept any heckling in the crowd. If you heckle, we're going to ask you to be escorted out.
Has each and every one of you read our agreement between you and us?
Okay, you're six, you're about fifteen seconds left.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the public to know, the public comment period is an opportunity for the public to give comment. It's not to create a situation of dialogue between the council and the public. The purpose is for the public to give comment.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, Skyler, Vice Chair of the Committee, live in Lompoc, fourth generation. Racing's been a part of, my family's been a part of our tradition for many years. The farmers work very hard, then there are slack times, and that's when they'd work on their cars and stuff. It's our history, it's our legacy. I feel that the last meeting was not the meeting that we all wanted, and I strongly urge that you reconsider this matter and get us to the environmental impact. A lot of people have made statements that may or may not be true once that document's released, so please reconsider, keep the project on hand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Meadows, and I came here today to ask the council to reconsider their decision. I've been here for about two years so far, and this is the biggest group of friends and family I've ever made, is around the motorsports community, and I would really love to see that bring some growth in both social and economic to our city, and I think it'd be a great thing. And I'm proud to see all these guys here, whether it's my friends, my family, or fellow townspeople, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Bill Robertson. I'm a, I live in the Lompoc Valley, and I'll just say right now that I asked the council to reconsider their vote last week, and then after these other people speak, I have a few words I'd like to say, okay?
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nolan Parsons. I support the initiative for the motorsports park here in Lompoc, and I am local to the Lompoc Valley. I will say, I'm also in support of any initiative by the city that seeks to have an immediate, positive, tangible impact on public safety. It's ingrained in American culture and here in Lompoc, to be involved in motorsport, to race, to watch, to participate, to be a supporter. And that said, while conjecture, the odds are that there's going to be young and old folk alike that occasionally make a decision that could negatively impact their safety and that of those around them out on the streets here. The ability to save maybe one life by offering an outlet for people to go ahead and pursue this passion is worth more consideration and the funds that it would require, in my opinion. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Jerry White. I've lived in the Lompoc area for fifty-five years. I grew up at the base and moved to Lompoc and lived in Lompoc most of my life. Most of the council members have seen me at the Flower Festival. I volunteer there. I also help at the Christmas parade every year. I've done day of caring, many other activities in Lompoc, and I feel that this is a necessary project to keep the kids off the streets, illegal racing, also to keep the airmen on the base. They get muscle cars, and they tend to go a little fast also, but I think this is a good thing for Lompoc, and I'd like to see it reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, my name's Mike Rhodes. I live in the City of Lompoc, and I own a home in the City of Lompoc, and I live in the Lompoc Valley. I'd like you to reconsider your vote from last week and press forward with this motorsports park. I grew up in Salt Lake City. At the beginning of every school year and at the end of the school year, we had high school drags. You didn't have to be a great athlete to be part of the team of your school. Heck, I drove a dirt bike motorcycle and my car down the drag strip to score points for my school. It was a matter of pride that our schools would have. You'd carry the trophy from the beginning of the school year, and you'd try to keep it at the end of the school year and have it through the summer, and then go back the next year. And so it adds to the school projects, and something for the high school kids to do, keep them safe and sane, place to race their vehicles where they're inspected for safety, and they're wearing helmets, and just, we're doing all the right things. Didn't do the drag racing on the streets because I had my time slip. I knew how fast my car was, digitally proven, so there's no guy waving his arm or doing anything like that, is no discussion. My car was faster than yours, I didn't have to drag race you, we just showed it on a little piece of paper. Kept me from drag racing on the streets, kept me safe, I'm here today. I'm a paramedic supervisor with American Medical Response. I've been with them for twenty-two years. I see the accidents that happen from vehicles, from kids doing silly things in cars. This project will give them a safe place to do that, give them that out, along with lots of revenue into the community. We have multitude of businesses that are local businesses that are already involved and have their money down on this and looking to go more. They are here because of you guys. This is what, you support them, they support you. We need this, we need this motorsports park. It'd be good for the whole community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hey, my name's Taylor Harrison, Lompoc resident, been here for a few years. I just want to say, I think you guys should reconsider your vote about the motorsports park. I think it'd be a great project and helpful for a lot of kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Elixson. I live in the City of Lompoc. I support the motorsports park project, and I would ask that the council would reconsider their decision for last week. I got up last week and spoke after all was said and done. I wish I would have spoke sooner. Again, people don't know the facts of what's been planned for this motorsports park. It's been amazing to see the people that are now asking questions via social media, people that weeks ago I saw them spouting off at what a bad thing this was, and now they're going, "All we knew was it was a drag strip. We didn't know you were going to have a mountain biking path. We didn't know that you were going to have a kids section to keep them safe, where they can ride away from the big kids and the adults. We didn't realize how much you guys had to offer the community. It's not just about drag strip racing. Yes, that's part of the project, and yes, I'm hoping and praying it will get the kids off the street and do it in a safe location." But so many people's eyes have been open to what this can possibly offer our community, and I really hope you reconsider your vote from last week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Michelle Tonietzini, resident of Lompoc, councilman, mayor. We all have something to contribute. I'm a proud member of the project. I do believe this project is an answer of common problems in the community, a safe, designated place to ride and drive. The project represents building communities through parks, recreation, and philanthropy. The definition of philanthropy is goodwill to fellow members of the human race, especially, an active effort to promote human welfare. The dictionary definition, the good fortune, health, happiness, prosperity of a person, group, or organization, well-being, the physical or moral welfare of society. This project is not a drag strip, it's not a bar scene, and it is not immoral. This project is an active effort to promote human welfare. A man watches his grandson run around, ride around the track for the first time without laying his motorcycle down, so excited. Grandfather says, "Practice makes perfect," as he rides around again. We cannot deny the fact that the pollution folks are worried about currently exists in our community on our street. These racing cars drive the streets of Lompoc every day. The dust folks are worried about only cover the eyes of those who can't see the good this project is providing, and an active effort to promote human welfare, philanthropy. Folks, if we don't come together, Lompoc is nothing but a ghost town awaiting our moment of six feet under. I ask that you reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Gil Merle, and my brothers and I own a hot rod shop and automotive restoration shop here in town. We've been in business now for over ten years. If it wasn't for motorsports, I'm not sure what we'd be doing at this point, but the motorsports has been able to give us a pathway to do several things that I didn't think we'd ever be able to do in life. We've traveled and done lots of things and met some really unique people, and it's been really good to us. And I think it's been a long time, if, I mean, I've been here for, since I was ten years old, and Lompoc has never had anything for the youth to be excited about. I think this is the biggest thing in probably a long, long time for the youth to be excited about. I think I speak for most of the people here, it's just, I mean, you can tell, I mean, look at everybody here, it's a very exciting thing for the community, for the youth of the community, as well as everyone else, but I feel that, I hope you guys can really strongly reconsider your vote from last week, and I hope this really goes through. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Randy Murrow, and I live here in Lompoc. Been waiting for something like this to happen our whole lives, and all these gearheads here, good-hearted people, down-to-earth people, and we all enjoy the same thing. We'd deeply appreciate if you guys can reconsider your vote from last week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Luis Espinoza. I live here in the City of Lompoc, and I'm with, I support the Lompoc Motorsports Park, and I'm asking you guys to reconsider your last week's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Council, Mayor, I'm here to ask you to reconsider your vote. I've been born and raised here all my life, and families have plenty of business here, and I really support your guys' decision to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, Bob Manfrina. I was born here, raised here, went to school here, made a living here, retired here. I also raced on the streets of Lompoc when I was a kid. I think I was lucky I wasn't one, you know, like one of those kids on that, on our pre thing there. Anyway, I urge you to reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name's Travis Bryson. I'm here to support the motorsport park. Piggybacking on what my friend Nolan said, if we can save a life by taking kids off the street by racing, I think we should really reconsider this. It's very important, I mean, as a gearhead, we have a big family, and as we can see here, we have more people that are supporting it than anybody that's denied it so far. So if you could strongly reconsider this, everybody here would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, Tyler Burnett. I live in the City of Lompoc. I support the motorsports park and ask the council to reconsider last week's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Ramiro Lara. I live in the City of Lompoc. I support the motorsports, and I hope you guys could reconsider your vote from last week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, I'm Joey Trevoy. I ask you to reconsider, because if you actually go to a factory, car lot, cars are going much faster off the shoreline floor. This would actually help the kids at high school if you go to the parking lot and look at them and see how many fast cars there are, and they're not getting slower. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, my name is Marcus Wilson. Moved to Lompoc in nineteen seventy-eight. I thought it was interesting that we started the meeting with a video that shows what can happen with street racing. I know that that was meant to show drunk driving, but the same thing happens with street racing. You guys have all seen that. You've seen people die in the streets. People are going to race. There's no way around that. What I would be asking you to do is reconsider the vote and give people an opportunity to race in a safe environment where they have an opportunity to learn how their cars handle, what's going to happen if they do get loose and out of control. It's going to make people safer. I've been involved in different motorsports on track, autocrossing in different areas, and I know that all these organizations are very professional. They do a good job at safety. They give everybody an opportunity to learn how their cars perform, and I do ask you to reconsider your vote and give this an opportunity to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name's Tristan, and I support the motorsports park, and I ask you guys to reconsider last week's vote.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name's Evan Genetti with the United States Air Force. I strongly wish you guys to reconsider your vote. When I think of Lompoc, all I really think of is you guys' penitentiary, and I think this could really change people's idea of Lompoc in a more positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Thomas Taylor. I've lived in Lompoc for twenty-two years, and I've worked on cars and bikes for the last ten. The motorsports community is such a wonderful group of people. You can see that they're enthusiastic. They're willing to take time in their evenings, their weekends, their nights to help each other out, to come to city council meetings. And I think this would be a huge opportunity for Lompoc to really put it on the map for young people. Growing up through middle school, high school, anytime you're looking for something to do on the weekend with your group of friends, the answer would be, "Well, the first thing I'm going to do is get a car and leave Lompoc." You know, what are we going to do in town? So you can see so many people would be so happy for this to happen. The community reaching down from Los Angeles, Ventura, Lompoc, five cities, all the way to San Luis, we all communicate together, and we all are a very tight-knit community, and this would really make Lompoc a hubbub activity. It'd be a great chance for us to really be something more than just, you know, art and flowers, which is great, but there's so many enthusiastic young people that like to have something else to do here.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, my name's Julian Van Romeo. I've lived here practically all my life. I grew up here, went to school here, and just like Tom said back there, growing up in high school, you know, on the weekends, you just, one of the first things that happens in high school is, you know, you get a license, you learn how to drive, and that's pretty much your outlet. Your outlet is just driving around, aimlessly around town. Some people get a little more into cars, and of course, you know, things like street racing happen. I feel like that's kind of ingrained in, you know, America's culture. Hot rodding was a big thing back when cars first started coming out, and people modified them. That was just a kind of a thing that just happened, and it evolved into something a little more, and, you know, it's done all over the country. And a lot of people from around this area, they have to travel pretty great distances if they want to do it legally, and some, many people do. They drive very far to Bakersfield, for example, and I just think it'd be a really great thing to pursue this project. And also, aside from keeping people safe on the streets, it keeps people from doing other things. I mean, there's a lot of people, a lot of people know, a lot of the car guys know, I mean, it's kind of hard to do anything bad if you're working on cars. It's a lot of money spent. You're either working or you're working on your car. There's no time for any, like, bad activities on the side, that's for sure. So strongly wish you guys would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Antonio Corainio. I live in Lompoc Valley. Been here for ten years. I support the motorsports project, and I really urge you guys to reconsider you guys' vote and help this community grow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name's Ray Trevoy. I live in the City of Lompoc, born and raised. I support the motorsports park a hundred percent and would love to see this thing further on, and hope you guys will reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Manolo Velazquez. I've lived here all my life and born here, and I would ask that the council reconsider their vote on the motorsport parks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Junior Grotas, and I will want to participate in this motorsports project and agree with it, because I think it's fun and a good idea to vote, and I would ask you guys to reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Alberto Cazares, and I've lived in Lompoc my whole life, born and raised, and I really hope you guys would reconsider opening up the motorsports project, because[1754.61] I know cars has been pretty much my whole life. You know, they interest me, they're, I've known people from cars. Most of my close friends have been all car friends, you know? It's something to do on the weekends. What do we gotta do? Work on a car or something, you know? And then it'd be a lot safer for the community of Lompoke, well, not just Lompoke, but everywhere in the area, really, since people don't have an outlet to go, you know? People would just take it to the street. Where else would they take it? There's no track around here. Closest one I could think of would be either in LA or Bakersfield, so I'd imagine having this motorsports park here would be a great idea, not just, not just safety-wise, but also revenue. There'd be a lot of revenue coming in from everywhere in the area, pretty much. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name is Jacob Gustafson. I'm a Lompoke resident, and I'm not involved in motorsports in any way, shape, or form. I'm not involved with the project, but I sure do like taking my kids to events like this, and I would love to be able to take them somewhere local to enjoy races. I think it's a lot of fun, and I think it's a great thing for families to enjoy together, and I hope you reconsider.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Jesse Shepherd. I've lived in Lompoke and I support the motorsports park a hundred percent, and I ask the council to reconsider their last week's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name's Kelly Kennedy. I've lived here twenty-eight years. I've been involved with Santa Maria Racetrack for sixteen years. We race vehicles there. I've seen the amount of income that they bring in. I've seen the amount of people, families. It's not just a bunch of guys with dirty hands. It's families. They bring their whole entire families. They come, they stay in hotels, they eat, they, you know, they socialize. I'm totally for the motorsports park. I'm asking you to reconsider. Take a look at the amount of money that's coming into the dunes just down the way. You know, the amount of people, they come from Bakersfield, they come from LA, they're from San Diego, even as far as Arizona. I don't see what the deal is, you know? The income alone, you guys are talking about the kids, it's all about the kids. Well, it's not really about the kids. It's, yes, the kids need something to do, but it's the income. There's no reason why we can't have wine and wheels in the same town. It's just, something needs to be for the families in the area, and something needs to be done to bring a lot of money into Lompoke Valley and to support our hotels and our wineries and our eating establishments, and I'm asking you to reconsider. And like I said, it's not just about the kids, to give them a safe place to come. It's about bringing families from other areas all over to enjoy Lompoke and what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, my name is Brian Blakeborough, and I'm here tonight to ask you guys to reconsider the motorsports project. I know you guys killing it. It doesn't just affect that project, it affects many more throughout the community, and I think that you guys should revisit it and take a look at it and make a judgment from there.
Thank you, sir. Next.
City Council, thank you for being here. John Johnson. I was up here last week. I just want to say, we had a race in Idaho last weekend, and there were probably three-hundred-and-fifty people at fifty dollars apiece and forty-eight people at a hundred dollars apiece, and these people spend anywhere from a thousand, five-hundred to a thousand dollars just in fuel, let alone two or three days on their driving back and forth. Santa Maria Speedway just started up, or Santa Maria Track just started up Speedway three weeks ago. They had two-hundred-and-fifty people, and each person paid up to sixty dollars. I just happened to race four races at sixty dollars apiece, and I would do the same thing here. Right now, I have four people, if this passes, that's willing to donate ten thousand dollars each as soon as they know this is gonna work out. But the money, it's just gonna floor in, and thank you for being here, and have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just want to say thank you for allowing me and others to speak tonight. My name is Rudson Ross. I'm currently a high schooler at Cabrillo High School. I'm a senior. I can definitely say I'm the youngest one speaking tonight. Let me ask you one question. When you think of the future, what do you see? You see, when I think of the future, I see my generation, and the reason this is kind of at my concern is because I've lost countless friends due to illegal street racing out of California, but that's not the point. The point is, I've lost countless friends, like I've said, due to street racing. It's stupid. That's what it is. What I'm asking you to do is to save my generation and generations to come by rethinking your consideration on the, or reconsidering your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. So you've been up here once before, and I know you made a comment about keeping it short, so tell me what you had said when you left. You've already spoke once, is that correct?
I just said, I just waited until the end of the line, and I was gonna take my two minutes if I could, so.
Go ahead.
Okay.
But one bite of the apple for everyone, okay? Go ahead.
Okay, man. My name's Bill Robertson, and I support the motorsport park. I'd like to address a few of the comments from last meeting. The people, the people that's well attracted was number one, okay? My father retired from the Air Force and moved here when I was young. I graduated Lompoke High School in nineteen seventy-seven, got married and raised my children here. I've owned a business here for many years. I employ local people. I support local programs. I'm a Staff Sergeant in the National Guard. I'm a member of the State Honor Guard, the Elks, the American Legion, the VFW, Church of the Nazarene. I sponsor baseball, soccer teams, school programs, and just about any other organization that asks me. I spent a year overseas in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, a year in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. So, you know, that's the kind of people that you don't want to attract, I don't know. The second one is property value. I own property in Lompoke. I own property in the village, and I live in Providence Landing, and I think this would be a plus for people wanting to move here, okay? The third thing was the noise. I own many cars, four of them over three-hundred horsepower, one over four-hundred horsepower, one over five-hundred horsepower. They all have stock exhausts. I don't like loud, obnoxious cars, and anything that runs at the park would have to be tested for decibels, okay? The fourth thing was the dust. We live in an agriculture valley, and nothing could come close to the amount of dust picked up by a twenty-foot disc behind a tractor, okay? I also have motorcycles. I can't ride because the nearest off-road area is two and a half hours away unless you want sand and salt through your machine. I don't race anymore, but I would if I, I wouldn't mind having a place to open up my vehicle without worrying about.
You need to wrap it up, sir.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Brandon Bridge. I'm a local business owner and business developer. I am a local resident and homeowner. I have volunteered for numerous of the projects that John Lind has supported with his foundation. I would like to comment here of numerous things I have seen leave this town. The shuttle, three theaters, a pool, which all of your backs are turned to, the skating rink, a mini golf, batting cages, mud bogs, and flowers are on their way out. You have helped bring wine. The tourism, it is very common to see a developed or undeveloped area take on a racetrack. We can look at Santa Maria and Denver, large and small. They developed a track outside of the community, and such that, that point in time, the residents and businesses have moved in. We also look at our own airport. It was moved originally from where it was to where it is now, to a non-developed area to allow it to be away from residents. Residents have moved into the area. I would like to talk about the track record that the foundation has. They have brought numerous parks with little to no help from the city council as an organization. We brought you members in to support the change. You continually block it. They have parks in their mindset. That is what the community wants, whether it be golf, a motor park, or a bike course. At this point in time, I would like you to reconsider your vote, specifically you three members.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening, I'm Grace Handlin. I'm a resident of Lompoke for thirty years. I raised both of my girls here, and my youngest came home one day with what was called a little red rice rocket. It was a little Honda hatch, and it screamed, and it was scary, but she got it on her own. You know, you're busy, your kids are working, you're working, life goes on. I hope I'm not boring you. This is important. She, thankfully, she survived the car. She got to be on a first-name basis with most of the police and sheriff's department. Just a few years ago, we were talking about how lucky she was that she made it, you know, to be an adult, and she has a family now of her own. And we were talking about the car, and she said, you know, she said, "There was the night I should have died." She narrowly missed a concrete pylon, traveling over speeds of eighty miles an hour. My daughter also participated in the Every Fifteen Minutes program, and in that program, I had to write a letter to her as if she had died. So when you do that, I don't know if any of you have had a child who have done that, you have to put that, yourself, in that space to be able to write that letter to your child who has died. My daughter could have died that night. I used to cruise State Street. It was okay. Here, it's not okay for kids to cruise. They need somewhere to go. They need a safe place, and this would be a safe place to go. One of the alternatives when she was in high school was the kids would all gather on a ranch outside town. They'd drink, they'd party, they'd have a great time, they'd get in their cars and their trucks, and they'd hit the road. I think we need to show our kids they don't have to involve alcohol and illegal activities to have a good time, and I think this is the place to start it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
How do you do? My name's Steve Bridge. I've lived here for forty years. I'm a property owner and a business owner in the community. I'm gonna commit this from a different direction, 'cause I believe in procedures and processes. And you guys have worked for two and a half, three years with a group in partnership to get to the EA, and a week before the EA comes out, you make the decision you made last week. How can any of us, in an informed manner, decide if we're for or against the motorsports if we don't have the facts in front of us? So that's one place. I think you should follow the procedures, your partners. The other place I'm coming from is, you should be fair. None of you guys were surprised. This foundation has worked on this for years. You guys had a memorandum of understanding to get to a place where you can make a decision. To cut it off because the NEPA came out as a new requirement is giving up because times are tough. We don't give up in Lompoke for times tough. You guys should buckle down, find a solution, get to the EA, and then let us make an informed decision. Let's not just make it because there's a bunch of guys on the hill who can yell, or there's people that are confused on what the facts are. I don't know what the facts are, I haven't seen them. Give me the materials so we can all make an informed decision. So I'm requesting you reconsider your decision.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Brandon Madsen. These are my daughters. We are residents of Lompoke, and we support the Lompoke Valley Motorsports Park project. We beg you to reconsider your decision from last week. It's gonna help everybody, including these two little ones over here that are too shy to stand up and look at you, but with good decisions, they'll probably look at you really nice. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name's Tyian Campfield, and I'm a Lompoke resident, and I would like for you to reconsider your decision last week that you made. I am not a gearhead. I don't even change my own oil, so this isn't exactly something that I would probably participate. I'd probably be a spectator, but I came to support it because I've heard a lot of people say that the support is only coming from people who are going to use it. I have thirteen nieces and nephews that live in Lompoke, and it seems like it's a daily struggle for them to stay on the right path. They're doing a pretty good job, but some of them, it's scary times right now, and I'd like to see for some of my nephews to, you know, be taking an interest in cars instead of what Lompoke has to offer right now, which seems to be drugs, gangs, and a penitentiary. And then when you become twenty-one, you can go to the wine ghetto. So again, I'd like for you to reconsider your decision and support the motorsports park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Via. I'm a Lompoke resident. I had moved from Lompoke when I was ten years old, came back recently, three years ago. I am a racing mom. I've been a racing girlfriend. I've been a racing wife, and I think it's perfect because my kids, growing up, going to school in Tucson, Arizona, they had a drag strip, they had a dirt track, and they also had an asphalt track that they could use and go and race legally. And I think my biggest problem with my kids growing up wasn't the drugs, it wasn't the gangs, it was, I was getting calls saying that they were spending too much time in auto class. So I would really like the council to reconsider their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Donald Edward, I'd like to congratulate the three members that made the adult decision. If you read anywhere on the internet, you find out that no one wants a drag strip within five miles of any residential areas. Lincoln, Nebraska's set up criteria. Everybody should read it because it makes sense. One of the key statements that I saw in the Lompoke paper was, "No one's property value ever went up next to a drag strip or in a drag strip area." One of the things that I got corrected, the traffic problem's gonna move on to North Avenue and V Street and O Street, and all the noise from that area is gonna be in Walmart, in all those subdivisions that are out there, and you can bet that the city lawyer is gonna be hearing from a lot of these people that are gonna be disenchanted. Luckily enough, I turned on the city council chamber tonight and realized that you're playing to a stacked deck here, and the adults sometimes make the right decision, and I'd like to congratulate the three people that did. And I'd like to pass this on. I wasn't able to be here for that last meeting, which is a shame, because I've got some pertinent information that I think every council member should read that's an adult. One of the things that you're being played with the idea that kids are gonna benefit from this drag strip. You can bet the adults that are pushing this are the people that want it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name's Oscar Escobar, and I live in the city of Lompoke. I am originally from Houston, Texas. Back home, there is a motorsports park eight miles away from my house, and that being said, there is no illegal street racing problem back home. You know, we showed a little video before this meeting, and it was teaching people how to drink responsibly. Well, the motorsports park would teach people how to race responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Mayor and council members, I feel like the lone voice in the woods here. My name's Anne Rouget. I've been a member of the community for about twenty-three years, been very active, and as I said the other night, my husband and I have worked very hard to improve the quality of life in this city. I want to commend the three council members who made the right decision the other night. You looked at the problems, you looked at the finances, which is where the crux of the matter is with this. I ask that you not reconsider your vote and stick to your guns. I know it takes a lot of courage, and I expect, I would imagine, that the last three or four days have been really very busy for you. You've been bombarded probably with a lot of emails and phone calls, and I ask you to[1666.03] probably, with a lot of emails and phone calls. And I ask you to keep the courage and do what you think is right for the total community. I'm not one of the people that sits on the hill and yells. I live right across the street from where this project is supposed to be. If it was in a different place, I would feel differently, but it is in the wrong place, as several people told you the other night. But stick to your guns and do not change your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi. My name is Zach Wason. I'm a, I live here in Lompoc. Just about everybody here who's between the ages of twenty to thirty, I see on a day-to-day basis, every day. We hang out every weekend, and just last December, we all took a trip to Bakersfield, and we all went to the drag strip out there. And after the day ended, everybody was like, "Man, wouldn't it be great if Lompoc had a strip to..." No, we could do this every weekend. And there's people from Ventura all the way to past San Luis that I know would come down here every weekend, just about, and race. And I have a buddy who lives out in Missouri. They do five-dollar Fridays every Friday night, and he says it does nothing but it gets packed. And so, just kind of, everybody rethink your vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. I'm Ruth Skyler, and I'm a long time, a long time resident of Lompoc. And I've been a member, the Lompoc is a racing community. It's raced for years, raced from the beginning. And I think all the young people, my father included, which, and my grand, probably my grandfather raced when he came here. It's been a long time. The community needs racing, a little, you know, in a safe area. We need this area. And it doesn't just include motors, you know, the drag strip. It includes motorcycles. It includes the small children. I don't know whether any of you have taken a few minutes to go down to the little racetrack that we have, the little motocross track, but there's a lot of little kids going around there, learning to do safety and being safe. There's little girls, three years old, that go around and fall asleep going around because they get tired, but they do enjoy it. And I think it's a place where we can be here in Lompoc and not always travel outside the Lompoc. Mayor and city council, I wish you to reconsider your decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello. I'm Paul Hornberger. I was born and raised in Lompoc. When I was in high school, we used to be able to ride motorcycles in the riverbed, and there was a lot of people there. You can ride from one bridge to the other bridge, and it was great fun. When my kids were young and growing up, I used to travel two to three hours on the weekends to take them to go enjoy motorcycles. This is more than a drag strip. It's for families. And when we'd take off for the weekend, we'd go for a day. We'd leave Saturday, Sunday morning. We'd come back in the afternoon, and we'd spend our money in other communities. We'd go out for breakfast. We'd go out for lunch. We'd go out for dinner. It's more than just a drag strip. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, come forward. Okay, anyone else that wants to speak, move, move forward to the podium up here.
Good evening, city council. I'm Gilbert Navarro. I've been with the Lompoc Park Director's Pool Foundation for many years. It isn't something I do on a regular basis. I don't really hang with a lot of people, but I hung with this because it was about the people. It was, the reasoning behind building the motorsports park was about the people. It wasn't really for the people that are in the foundation. It was for the people outside, amongst us. That was the reason I stuck with them. It wasn't like myself. I, I wanted to bring a bike park to this city. I don't even ride a bike. I did it for everyone else who's been coming. I've met so many people, New York, San Diego, Florida, Spain, Colombia, California, all parts of California, people that have been coming. And they've been talking about the motorsports park, which was kind of interesting. I've had more people that wanted to ride motorcycles in the bike park. And I said, "Well, you know, we're, hopefully, we're going to be building this entity with the motorsports." Anyway, it's about the people. Please reconsider. Like I said, I don't ride a bike, but it was for the people. And that's really what this is about. And I'm sure we can figure something out. Like I said before, I don't live on the hill, that hill, this hill, or that hill, but I do live over here, and I do have that speed trap next to me. And since last week, it's been really great until today, which all of a sudden, all today, a bunch of people were speeding, but it is what it is. I love Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you know, I'm the process gal. So, I just want to make sure you're, you know what's in the city council handbook, because the city attorney just told you that public comment was only for comment. And so, I'm going to read out of the city council handbook, where it's, "All remarks and questions should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any specific council member, staff, the audience, or the media. No question should be asked a council member or staff member without first obtaining permission from the presiding officer." Mayor Lingle, you are the presiding officer. So, if you choose not to answer any questions, then that is your choice. It's not because that's not what this is for.
Thank you. Hey, hey, hey.
Oh, I'm not done. Sorry. I'd also like to, I'd also like to add one more thing. Oh, I will only take a little more time. I would also like to read to you B23, Placing Business on the Agenda, also from the city council handbook, where it says, "During public comment periods or by correspondence with council members, a member of the public may ask council, 'Consider an item,' and upon consent of a majority of council members present, a staff report will be prepared and processed for a future agenda." So, now you have had over forty people come up here and ask you to reconsider the vote, and there's nothing to prevent you right now from turning to all these other council members that you have and saying, "Do we have three votes?" You had all these people in the gallery waiting. Are you going to make them wait until the very end of the meeting, or are you going to see right now if you have three votes? And that's a question.
That's a question. If a council member chooses to recommend reconsideration, we will discuss it now.
Okay. So, do any of you?
We want to, we're going to finish public comment, though.
Oh.
I think everyone has a chance to speak, not just, not just ninety-eight percent of the people.
Okay. Well, I mean, you, you can answer. I mean, maybe it would shorten the meeting. I'm not sure. Thank you.
Jane?
Jane Bear.
Hello. My name is Joel Montes. I'm a recent graduate from Azusa Pacific with a bachelor's degree in exercise science. I'm currently pursuing a degree in physical therapy, doctorate. I see great potential for this project. It could present benefits to rising revenue for illnesses such as muscular dystrophy, cancer, and other illnesses. I fully support this motorsports project, and I ask that you please reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Council members, I'm Ian Bear, and I'm a Lompoc resident and business owner, and I fully support the motorsports park, though I am not a racer, and I urge you to reconsider it. And given that we've heard from the handbook, I urge you to reconsider it now, because, as Jane Bear said, these folks would like to know what's about to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no rise, we're going to close oral communications.
Well, I guess rather than waste everybody's time, is anybody willing to reconsider?
Is that a motion?
It's a question. It just asked for second and third.
No, I need a motion and a second, and...
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, clear the, clear the, clear the, okay, the motion is for reconsideration of last Thursday's vote. That means that if we vote to reconsider it, staff will prepare a staff report, bring it back to the council for reconsideration of last Thursday's vote. If we vote no, last, last Thursday's vote stands. Is that cleared, everyone? Councilor Starbuck, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone understands? Let's vote.
Yeah!
Well, I guess we're not going to hear any noise if this thing passes, right? Okay. Any other city council requests at this point?
I'm not going to do anything more tonight, but I do want to have another discussion on, on this project, maybe down the road, because there's some questions that have not been answered. I don't think anybody's against what the facility is, but it's really where it's at. I didn't hear anyone in any of their comments that we should put it in the river bottom, and that's what the big kicker is on this. Now, nobody I'd heard against the facility and what was going on down there, but I think, and there's also a couple of other things on the foundation that needs to be cleared up. And I might as well bring it up, there's all this discussion of the sixty-six thousand or sixty-seven thousand of fallen warriors was going to have to go under the foundation, and that's not right. This council did not set that up. So, there's some things that were brought in. And like I say, yeah, everybody's been here. I've been here since nineteen fifty. I've seen a lot of things happen in this town, too. But a racetrack in the river bottom is not going to work.
Hey, comments from there. We'll ask the police chief to escort you out. Okay, let's take a ten-minute break. Okay, if everyone can take their seats. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing. This is, oops, okay. We're going to move on to public hearing. This is item number five, Approval of Fair Adjustments for Dial-A-Ride and Santa Barbara Shuttle Services for the city of Lompoc. This is Mr. Fernbaugh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have a recommendation before you tonight to hold a public hearing and approve amendment number five, which is joint powers agreement with the county for fair adjustments in the county. Adopt resolution 604116, establishing new dial-a-ride fares for both city and county service and the Santa Barbara shuttle, or provide alternate direction. At the council's meeting of January fifth, council reviewed and approved the chief master fee schedule, which recommended dial-ride service costs within the city go from a dollar to two dollars, and that service in the county go from a dollar and a half to four dollars. The master fee schedule also included an adjustment from six dollars to seven dollars per trip for the Santa Barbara shuttle. Current fares for county ADA services are before you this evening. You can see that we're fairly low in the city, and our new adjustments will move us up quite a bit. But one of the things to consider also is that our ADA service currently recoups about three-point-three percent of its cost, and state mandate is twenty percent. So, we're looking at hopefully increasing our fare box and meeting the state standard. In conclusion, the proposed fair adjustments keep in, in conformance with the current FTA requirements. Staff concerns, concurs with the city council approval of the master fee schedule that includes adjustments for city and county ADA services and Santa Barbara shuttle. Available for your questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Fernbaugh from the council? Okay, we will move to public comment. Any public comment on item number five? Is it number five? Yeah, it is item number five. Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. What's your desire? Mr. Hamdul?
I read through it, and I'd support it, so I'd move to support staff's recommendation.
Okay, that's motion to sup-
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Oh, no, take my, my screen. There you go. There you go. I pressed the wrong button.
And that's five-zero. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to council request, item number six, Affirmation of Approved Utility Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2016-17. And this is Ms. Wall.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lingle, members of council. This has become an annual event for the four years out of the last, and it should go for five for the water and wastewater, and this will be the third year out of five for the solid waste review. What we're asking tonight is for, let me back up for a minute. I'm sorry. The enterprise funds are self-sufficient. They should be able to support themselves. Additionally, and I know you guys have seen this several times before, but thank you for your, for anyone that hasn't seen this. We need to also make sure that they're in compliance of any bond covenants and loans. We need to make sure it has operating reserve of ninety days, and it's a principle that we should be striving for, the enterprise funds. And additionally, we should have money set aside to reinvest in the city's capital infrastructure for pipes, for wells, for anything that redefines that particular enterprise fund. So, where have we, where have we been? This is just on water and wastewater, and we're looking at what was recommended through the Wildin study, what was approved through the city council, and what we're affirming. And originally, for water, they had recommended nineteen percent, eighteen percent, seventeen percent, fifteen percent, and then zero percent at the 2017 year. What council desired to do is to make it a level playing field over the five years for water. And the fifteen percent for the first year allowed the city to meet the first goal, which is to make sure our bond covenant met the ratio approved. What we've affirmed through the last three years is a fifteen percent, fifteen percent, and seven-point-five percent. And the wastewater rates, what was recommended overall was twenty-one percent, seventeen percent, and then eleven percent for three years. And what was approved was twenty-one percent and ten-point-five for four years, trying to give a balance to the rates. And council has affirmed those for the first three years. So, what has, what has that gotten us? We, the goals we're trying to meet, again, the bond covenants is the ratio, and we accomplished that for both water and wastewater in year two. Positive net income, we've done for water in year three. We plan to have the operating reserves, which is a ninety-day or three months for water for five years, and wastewater, we're planning to get there in over, excuse me, that should be ten years. And to establish a reserve fund, we plan to start being able to have money set aside for infrastructure over the five-year period. But in the, our study in 2013, council decided to put that over a ten-year period plan. And again, this just kind of reaffirms our goals, that we've met the bond covenants for the bonds in water and wastewater. For the SRF, which is the state revolving fund, that's just wastewater. We haven't met those yet. We've met the one-to-one money needed to pay the, the SRF, but we're also supposed to put aside about four-point-five billion dollars, which we haven't started yet. The ninety-day operating reserve in water, we're pretty close. We've got eighty-one days if we do with what we're projecting, but for wastewater, it's about a hundred and forty-one days to the negative. In repair and replacement, we really haven't set aside the money that we need to set aside for those In solid waste, we're recommending a three-point-six over the period of 2014 to 2018, and council did approve those over that period of time, and we've affirmed it for the first two years of the rate. The rate increases budgeted for solid waste require a ninety-day reserve. That's currently met, and the reason why it's met is that we haven't gone into building the landfill gas collection and control system. And we're starting to go into the bid process, so that should be coming along shortly. And the additional rates are also needed for operational and capital needs. Now, this information was brought forward to the utility commissioners on May ninth. They decided to table this until the enterprise reimbursement study had been completed by city council. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the rates that were approved in 2013. So, with water, that would be the seven-point-five percent that we- point five percent that we... We did not do last year, and then the fifteen percent, so that's a cumulative total of twenty-three point six percent. We're asking for the ten point five percent for wastewater and three point six for the solid waste. And happy to answer any questions, or take comments.
Councilor Mosby.
On the water rate of last year, we put forward a seven and a half percent. How did that, uh, what, how did it result in revenues?
Well, currently, right now, we've collected about three percent of that seven and a half percent, so it's less than half that we were anticipating.
Okay, less than half of that. Did you, is there a reason why we didn't get what we were hoping to get?
Well, there, there are two reasons. One is the drought, that people are complaining to use less water. The another, the another reason is that people, being aware that they can save money by not using as many units, have been very good at conserving their water.
So they were able to conserve their way out of that, a little bit, of the rate increase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Wall? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Starbuck.
Well, in regards to that, so what we're actually looking at on that slide, we projected or affirmed seven and a half percent, but the actual revenue that...
To date, to...
Because of the conservation activities.
Yes.
What did that do in effect with the wastewater at that time, then?
Uh, we have to remember that there...
There's the long billing.
A couple components, yeah. So people, usually in winter, it doesn't, there, that's the lowest, lowest time that you're going to use water, so it hasn't, and impacted it as greatly as half, but people have been conserving even in wintertime, and, um...
So the effect on this basically, Melinda, would be down a few years when the average comes out again, where we would notice that in the wastewater?
Of course, it's a six-year average. You're dropping the lowest, you're dropping the highest, and, yeah.
So probably this will be one of the lowest, and we'll see this in three, five years from now, then, the reflection of what actually will happen with wastewater.
Yeah, additionally, you have to remember, though, that we do have the water plant, wastewater plant as a whole, and we've got our partners, which, um, include, uh, the Vandenberg Village Community Service District and the Air Force Base. And over a period of time, we've seen less use from the Air Force Base, and the CSD has been very good about conserving their water, too, so we're not getting as much, um, revenues from their, that source.
And the last question I want to ask right now is, the state revolving fund covenants wastewater has not met those. What do we need to do in wastewater to meet that?
Well, we've met the one-to-one payment. We've made the payments. The problem is that we haven't put that one-year amount, the four point five million, aside, and what we need to do is take that much money and put it in a reserve account, and we haven't...
Basically proof we have the money in, in advance form?
It's, it's a, a future, uh, investment. They expect you to be able to have money to make improvements after the twenty-year loan is done.
So it's not really a, it's nice and they'd like it, but it's not really a mandatory have-to-have-it? Or is it lower our credit, so to speak, later?
The bond covenants, they check on us every year. They make sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do. I haven't had any inquiry from the state revolving fund about what we have in reserve yet, but we realize that we need to have that money set aside.
We know someday they'll ask, huh?
Yes.
Ms. Wall, if we can go back a slide real quick?
Um...
Yeah, right there. So, does this say that currently, we are meeting our, our bond covenants? I think that's what I just heard you say.
We're meeting the covenants for the bonds, which is our, um, two thousand... The nineteen ninety-eight, the two thousand two, and the two thousand five bonds.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and that was one of our goals.
Yes.
Okay. The other goal was to have a positive net income, and it looks like we have it on water, not yet on wastewater. How far are we? Was that the negative one forty-seven or something like that?
The, um...
Is that, is that the negative hundred and forty-seven days?
Hundred, yeah, that's a hundred and forty-seven days to get, um... That's what we're projecting in, um, two thousand seventeen, to meet, even to do that. Without any kind of rate increase, it's a hundred and eighty-seven days. So, and that's on table eight. So we're not there yet. We're not in, in any...
So with no rate increase, it would be one eighty-seven?
No, yeah, no rate increase would be a hundred and eighty-seven days, as shown on table eight.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Wall? Okay, we're going to go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Oh, actually, yeah, go, public comment.
Counsel, mayor, John Lynn, um, with regard to our, the decision made by the utility commission, we discussed this, and we felt that putting, moving forward with rate increases when we did not know what portion of the, um, the next item down, the transfers were, was going to go through, wasn't appropriate, and if it takes one more month to, the rate increase the right way, that's better than rushing in and doing it the wrong way now. People are struggling in this town, as you've all heard from many, many people. Um, I think we all understand that there's going to be a wastewater rate increase, but I think we need to have better information on both solid waste and on water to determine if that's going to be needed, and we're not going to know that until this council decides this evening or at some future meeting on the other issue, because that is really the, the twenty-five-thousand-pound gorilla in the room. That's the, that's where all the money is. So, um, I would encourage you to put this aside until that decision is made, and maybe you make that decision and, and then discuss this at this end, the end of this meeting, all to the order of the agenda. And if the other issue is resolved, then you can address this, and if it isn't, I would urge you to continue this after having the appropriate discussion this evening. Thank you very much.
Mayor, city council, Brian Cole, Lompoke resident. Thank you for listening tonight. I'm in accord with both Bob Holloway, utility commissioner, and John Lynn, vice-chair, that the methodologies of the so-called enterprise reimbursement plan are flawed and do not reflect the actual costs of services that the utility departments will be required to pay. This is the fourth year now of increases so far. As a county example, Mission Hills, as of March two thousand sixteen, reduced water usage by thirty-eight percent, but this was perceived as a problem, apparently to the general manager of the district because of lost revenue, and blames Governor Brown's twenty-five percent reduction mandate, and will be increasing water charges from nine dollars to fifty-seven dollars per meter. And I'm just thinking that that should get an attaboy and lowered rates for stellar conversation, conservation. I now pay an average of two hundred and fifty dollars a month, minus gas, for a three-bed, four-occupant residence, and we're being conservative. Another personal example, per day, my household has used seven hundred and forty-eight gallons of water per day less than last year. I have been surprisingly cited by Glenn Allen's HOA, have have, as have many others, for the browning of their lawns. Shouldn't those that conserve and use less be recognized and rewarded with lower rates? I believe they call that positive reinforcement. The purpose of the enterprise reimbursement plan is raise revenue, meet debit, debit obligations, rebuild fund reserves, replace aging water and sewer pipes, and so on. How it is doing that is now held to question. August two thousand fourteen, council members were asked to approve sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars from the general fund reserves, including forty thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars from utility reserves. Oh, that's where some of it went, to pay for consultants. I definitely need to come out of retirement. But you get my point. I read some of the hundred and ninety-five page, and well-done two, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen biennial budget, proudly proclaiming, "The city continues to protect its utility ratepayers," that's us, "by positioning itself to ensure the continued safe, reliable, secure, and available delivery of..." And to the last point, "I disagree reasonably-priced services." In reading the budget, I lamented that I just wished I had an economic uncertainty fund. I thought that was kind of funny to read that. Anyone here have one of those? I think not. That was ultimately merged within the city's general fund under restrictive reserve.
You have to wrap it up.
I will wrap. I would just suggest that we take another look at this, again, and that there are other ways of raising revenue, other than, as has been suggested, uh, prior, and I appreciate all of you guys just kind of putting up with all of that, where we could have ongoing festivals, ongoing public events, that would raise revenue involving kids and so on.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Bob Holloway. Um, if we, uh, approve this before we get the redistribution, uh, you know, then the city hall's going to get all the money. I mean, it's just honest. They're taking all the money now. If, we gotta, we have to go and we have to redesign the redistribution so that, uh, we understand what it's all about, and, uh, at the last utility commission meeting, we didn't even discuss it because, uh, there was no sense in doing anything until we found out what the redistribution, uh, project was going to cost us. Uh, I, you know, I mean, I'm pretty conservative, and I'm, I'm, I'm appalled at what's going on here. You know, the state says that we can only charge enough money to run the water sewer for what it costs us. Anything else, we, we can't raise the rates to do that. So what we're doing here is, is we're going underneath it around back door, and we're, we're going past the law, and I don't agree with that. So, um, you know, I've thought long and hard about this, and, uh, we, we just can't do anything until we get this redistribution stuff done, and I think that the redistribution thing should just be tabled for a year, because we got to figure out what the heck's going on here. We can't be taking all the money that we're charging. We raised the rate so we could fix the infrastructure, and if you noticed on that, on that bottom line up there, there was no money for infrastructure at all. No money at all. Because after we pay for the redistribution and everything else, there's no money left. Uh, you know, you have to be open-minded about this thing, and you have to let the people know what they're paying for. Uh, you, you know, I've been on the commission for a long time, and I told everybody we had to raise the rates so we could fix the pipes, and now we don't even have, it's three years in, and we don't even have any money to fix the pipes, and we've raised the rates three times. So, you know, it makes me out a liar, and I don't like that. So I just hope you guys reconsider, and you don't vote on this, and you do the redistribution part of it, and then we'll go back and we'll work on this later. Thank you.
Mr. Holloway, I've got a question for you. As you stated, you were, you've been on the commission for a long time, chair for most of that time, and you understand probably better than anyone the need to rebuild our infrastructure, I believe. Um, so I'm just going to ask you a question. Regardless of the, I mean, take the enterprise study out of the formula right now. Do you agree that we, at this point, need some increase in our wa- water wastewater?
Well, yeah, but I don't want to, I don't want to make any, I don't want to make any decision right now until we get the redistribution part of it.
I agree with you. I mean, but you don't disagree that...
I'm not disagreeing that we have to raise the rates, because what happened is, is, uh, the, uh, Governor Brown said we got to do twenty-five percent, and everybody else was already going down, so we're about thirty-three percent, and so we're below the, we're below the red line now in the, in the water. We're getting less and less.
Where's our public safety officer? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Try not, I'll try not to trip anybody while I'm up here. My name is Ron Fink. I live in the city of Lompoke. Each of you appointed a commissioner to the utilities commission, and they've made a recommendation to you. I would suggest that you follow their wise counsel and defer this item until you decide what you're going to do about the reimbursement fee study. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Okay, close public comment, bring it back to the council. What I'd like to do with the consent of the, of the supermajority, I'd like to, um, take this item, rest of this conversation, out of order, and discuss it again after our discussion, our next discussion on item number seven, which is enterprise reimbursement analysis. So we'll just continue this until after item, after we've made a decision on item number seven. Okay? I need, I need the supermajority, so let's, uh, let's vote on that. Yes.
Oh, I pressed the wrong button.
Okay, so we have the supermajority, okay. So we'll continue this discussion after we discuss item number seven. So, let's move on to item number seven, which is the continuation of enterprise reimbursement analysis, and that is, again, Ms. Wall.
This is Brad Wilkie, finance director. Um, Melinda has a brief presentation on this item, and as requested at the April fifteenth meeting, John Farnikoff of HFH Consulting is here to, um, address some of the questions that were brought up, uh, on April twenty-first, I believe. Um... I'll just, I'll leave it at that. So, here's Melinda.
Thank you, mayor, legal, members of council. This item is a continued item from March fifteenth. Um, this presentation is the same presentation we presented, uh, on March fifteenth. Just basically reviewing the fact that, uh, that we've had a general fund methodology, based on the cost of, uh, service study way back in ninety-six, ninety-seven fiscal year, and that enterprise reimbursement study, the general fund support methodology that we used, included the same elements that were, um, revealing for this enterprise reimbursement study. So we, the general fund support covered the items of public safety. It covered the right-of-way, which had dealt with the streets, and the return of general fund investments that utilities used. At that time, when they adopted it, they capped it at five percent of the revenue. Prop two eighteen is a big issue, and it was subject to two eighteen, and limits fees, the cost of services provided. Prop twenty-six has, a new, uh, prop has come along, and it applies to all services, admitting fees to the cost of services provided also. This one's a little, uh, prop twenty-six also includes electric. Prop two eighteen only included water, wastewater, and solid waste. Our current enterprise reimbursement study, again, looks at reimbursement for public safety, government facilities, right-of-way, and it ensures that these charges are defendable and support. Again, when we're looking at the, these items, and compared to our ninety-seven method, which was capped at five percent of our revenues, um, all the amounts combined, you can see that the costs are, are less in water and, and solid waste. These are actually all combined, and wastewater is greater. So we tried to break it down to be a little bit more understandable. The, the first top, uh, table is the table that is in the enterprise reimbursement study analysis report. This is the amount that we could charge per year. So that's five million dollars for all these items that list... So that's $5 million for all these items listed above. So the enterprise reimbursement study, the second one, it just says, okay, we could, in a two-year period, charge over $10 million for these services. Now, the 97, 98 method, we're at 3.49 and it shows a difference. Okay. What we tried to do here in the first slide, again, it shows the enterprise analysis saying that we could, if we wanted to, charge $10 million over a two-year period. In our draft budget, we allocated $5 million. So what we're recommending, in the third, the fourth chart, which is the one on the bottom here, it takes what we actually budgeted and what we're recommending. And you can see that when we budgeted, we budgeted amounts in transportation, transit, I'm sorry, that was about $500,000. And we took that totally out because transit basically depends on federal monies. And the other items that we're recommending, see if I can go down one, we're just staying here on this particular chart, I'm sorry. We're saying that we're reducing the amount in airport and transit. And what we're asking, we're going to increase amount in the communications internal service fund. And so part of this process is we're asking for a budget adjustment for that $6,000 in the communication funds. And the funds that we're actually asking for less, we actually don't need to make a budget adjustment. And the last one is the historical and rejected 97 method, just an overview of each fund and where it is. This last one is the general fund support. And as you can see, from 1998 to 2005, we've done that based on 5% of the revenue. Now, we've had rate increases over the years and we wanted to confirm that the way we're doing it would be viable, portable and defendable, and that these are not new fees for water, wastewater, and solid waste. They are new for electric communications in the airport. And, excuse me. We did take this to the utility commission and you've heard Bob speak, the chairman speak, Holloway, their, some of their thoughts are attached to this document. We do have the response from John Farnikoff concerning the questions that council had. And at this time, I'd like to introduce John Farnikoff and have you answer any questions that you might have on...
I'm sorry, I did not catch his name.
John Farnikoff.
Farnikoff, okay, thank you.
Sorry. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm John Farnikoff.
We invited him back for questions, specific questions that we had. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, thanks for coming down.
You're welcome.
I did have a question on your answer. I appreciate your methodology you put together on valuation for the wastewater facility. And I can follow your math and your methodology. And I must say that I, I can see, and excuse the way of putting this, I find a little degree of creativity with it. And I know in appraising and coming up with appraisals and stuff, you have to have some of that. And I understand that there's some of that there. I could come up with a methodology real similar to that. I could come up with a number that would be a little bit lower, a little bit higher. I mean, appraisal's a very difficult analysis. It's hard. I understand that. But I guess one of the questions I have is about the electric enterprise that I have there in the, and this might not be for you, but it might be for Mr. Wilkie. And the, it says in here on page six on the response letter that you had back to them. And in the middle of the page, it says, "The electric enterprise covers the cost of streetlighting using sources of non-rate revenue." Could somebody help me out with the non-rate revenue is? I mean...
Thank you, Mr. Mosby. The non-rate revenue is through the ARB. It's a revenue analysis. It's a third-party sales that we do through NCPA. And we collect about $1 million a year from NCPA in credits for that, that selling off to third parties.
Does that number come up somewhere in the budget book somewhere?
Actually does show on our, on our budget. There is, there is a line for it.
Is it in there? Okay. And it's, it's about a million, you say, or something like that? And do we, what else do we spend that non-rate revenue on?
It can be applied towards whatever we wanted to choose to expend it on. The, the electric fund is not a Prop 218, but in case it ever became a question, we did have, posed it to legal counsel and determined that non-rate revenue can be applied towards what you wish to apply it towards. Now, I'm not sure when we started paying for streetlights, but streetlights is a legitimate cost if we wanted to use that third-party revenue to spend it on.
Okay. What else do we spend that non-rate revenue on?
It just goes into the, to the electric fund. So if there's any money left over, it would just go towards rates.
So this is, this is kind of like profit that comes out of NCPA?
Yes.
And, okay. I wasn't aware of that, that number out there, that money out there. Take a better look at it, but maybe we can have a better explanation of it someday.
If I may, sorry. Non-rate revenue is also things like interest and there are some sales of scrap metal. Anything that's not paid for by a customer would be quantified as non-rate revenue. There are some utilities that have impact fees. That's not, that's a non-rate, non-rate revenue.
But likewise, in this case here, it'd have to be something that's relatively consistent. Some revenue coming in that we, you know, we can account for every year. It can't be the sales of scrap metal or something because that's...
Yeah, and to some extent, the interest too, because in 2011, we had virtually no cash whatsoever, so. But now with our revenue requirement being met for electric, it's generating some substantial amounts because of the investment process that we've re-done, starting in 2014. So it's more than just the money that we are getting from the investment in NCPA facilities, but that was, that's one that has been a fairly substantial amount. It doesn't always, it isn't always substantial, so it's, but in the last few years, it's been enough to cover that cost.
Which then did, does again come up with a question is if it's, if they have this rate revenue, this rate pool that's coming in, or non-rate revenue, I'm sorry, that comes in and they're paying for streetlighting, it seems like there should get some, some reimbursement for lighting the streets. You're charging them for driving on the street, like with right-of-way maintenance, but also public safety aspects to make the streets a little safer, they should get some credit, some, some amount of credit, I would think, because they're, they're paying for something. I mean, I don't know how other communities do. Does anybody know who else pays for streetlights? How do other communities do this?
Well, many other NCPA cities have the same situation. So I believe Ukiah does, for, for one example. I don't know them all, but many number of the NCPA cities do it some way, shape, or fashion.
So if they're not in NCPA city, how, who pays for the streetlighting?
Well, an example of that is in Santa Maria, I, what my understanding is, is they have streetlight districts that pay for it.
So it's like a property tax assessment of some sort?
That's what I understand it to be, yes.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my arms around this because it seems a little, you know, generally if somebody's paying for something, they're coming, bringing some skin into the game, they get some reward for it. And I'm still not able to, you know, really accept that they're not getting some credit for, for paying out of other revenue that they could be doing something else with. And what else do they spend that, that money on? The non-rate revenue? Is there some?
Well, like Melinda said, it's, it's part of the budget for electric. So we try to get the electric budget balanced every single year, so it's, it's part of the resources available to do that.
So then they're paying for lighting the streets as part of the resources not available for them to do something else?
That's the same thing with the decision to spend money on capital improvements in one type of capital improvement rather than others. That's one of the things that governments have to do all the time, is make decisions on what to do with resources. We don't have unlimited funds for doing every single thing that anybody wants to do. It's, it's, it's a balancing act within the utility and across all the entities within the city.
Okay.
Councilmember Mosby, if I can, did you, city manager, did you want to comment on Councilmember Mosby's question?
Only if he wants the additional information he seemed to be asking for. He wanted to know how other cities...
Yeah.
...did that.
Help me out.
And your question's a good one. The bottom line is, it's a matter of philosophy. You know, as you said, when you talk about skin in the game. So, quick example with the history of Fresno, which I'm familiar with. At one point, the streetlights were owned by Pacific Gas and Electric, which is the, has the franchise for electric delivery. So in that case, it's not a municipally-owned, but rather an investor-owned utility, but nonetheless, originally, original streetlights, street poles were owned by the enterprise. And the thought was, the rate payers for the electric utility paid that streetlight bill because that's the benefit they were getting. They were getting the benefit of the lights within their homes and electricity, and they were getting the benefit of the lights out on the street. So again, it's just a matter of philosophy of, well, who's benefiting therefore, who's paying? At one point along the line, decades ago, someone thought it would be a grand thing to have PG&E offered to give those streetlights to the city, and the city, for some unknown reason, accepted. And so from that point on, the street maintenance fund, in that case, paid for the, has paid for the streetlights, which means money that otherwise would have been going to improvement of streets now, now goes to the electrification of those lights. So is that an improvement or is that a harm? It's all a matter of philosophy and how you view it as to who's getting, who's getting the benefit and therefore who should be paying.
Right. And that kind of helps, I guess, the case that I had about giving them some credit because streets isn't paying for it. Electric is, so maybe some credit should come that way. What percentage, I don't know. But I thank you for that. And if I can, can, can somebody else's light on, try me to get in, but if I can't follow up on my, on my next question on, on the cost of street sweeping being included in solid waste. It's on the same page, next paragraph. It says, "The cost of street sweeping is included in solid waste rates because the majority of the material collected by street sweepers originated from solid waste customers as residue that was not collected in their containers." So I guess my question is to that, is how did, how did we come to that conclusion?
Thank you, Councilmember Mosby. The street sweepers have always come the day after the collection of solid waste. Whether or not the amount of material collected was from people not putting the trash in their cans, or what's flowing around in the streets, or the leaves, it's all related to the property near it that needs to be cleaned up. And the nexus is that they do it the day after a collection of solid waste.
Right. And I understand that, and I, I did a little bit of analyzing myself on this. I didn't go to one of the street sweepers and dump it all out and then calculate how much is sand, gravel, and garbage. But I did, what I decided to analyze is the vehicles. A lot of vehicles are left in the streets when they're street sweeping. So when the street sweeper's done and goes by, you, there's a, there's a certain section you can analyze and see what is there, what is garbage that's left over from, from solid waste and, and what is either naturally occurring from the biodegradation of the asphalt or dirt accumulation, or a large portion of it is organic matter from the, the street trees. And granted, does that really go towards wider maintenance? And I guess there's been some discussion on whether it really, street sweeping helps the asphalt out. But I know if you don't do it, you end up with a lot of gravel on the asphalt, you end up with a lot of dirt, you end up with a lot of sticks and weeds on the asphalt. And those of us had an opportunity to drive South H Street after a windy day and those Italian stone pines have, have lost their needles and you've got about four to six inches of needles on there. And I, assuming that's solid waste, maybe streets is out there cleaning it up. But you could see what kind of accumulation if the street sweeper wasn't perpetually driving around town, cleaning that right-of-way. And again, when I, when I see this, and if I saw something a little deeper that, that said thoroughly, you know, you analyze by the, you know, the ton and you saw that they, you know, 50% of everything that's cleaned up is garbage and 50% is streets falling apart, I could, I could come to some better conclusion. But the statement here, it doesn't seem that it was fully analyzed that, and it seems, oh, I don't want to say disingenuine, but I did, that the solid waste customers, that the street sweepers are picking up significant residue from the containers. And I, I don't see that. I just, I saw in a couple of cases, I saw a few cigarette butts, I saw a couple of water bottles. But majority of everything, I mean, a supermajority, 95% plus, was other material other than solid waste. So I do appreciate the response and trying to get down to the thought process and the methodology here on this, but I'm still figuring there, there must be a percentage that could be towards...
It doesn't benefit the streets, the, the right-of-way asphalt. You know, the street sweeping would actually degrade it after a while. So the only benefit is to, for the property owner to have their place in front of their home swept.
In one aspect, and I've been in a situation where, you know, if you come in on a, on an asphalt that has been taken care of and cleaned, there's a lot of little pebbles and gravels. And if you come up to a stop sign, maybe a little bit too fast, you have a lot of slip and slide. And in that case, you know, maybe that's something that reduces down in the public safety aspect that they're asking for and that they're charged because you would see that, less accidents if you're, by cleaning the streets. So there definitely should be some credit, I think, involved with the street sweeping that you're putting either towards public safety or whether it's the right-of-way maintenance.
Now, there, there may be some validity to this. This study was based on finding out what the general fund needed to do to reimburse itself. It wasn't itemized for those particular items and it, sometime if council wanted to come back and have us look at streetlights or the street sweeping or fire hydrants, as a matter of fact, that's something they could do and say, "Well, we think maybe the general fund should pay for a portion of the fire hydrant or the streetlights or whatever." That, that's your prerogative. But this study was basically done to look at the general fund and the costs that they do and how to get reimbursed for those costs.
And I understand that, that's, that's kind of one of the difficulties I'm having with this because it's about what the general fund needs and not what is, the service being provided. And it's kind of one of the difficulties, I'm, you know, wrapping my arms around this, but let some other people chew at it. Thank you.
City manager.
Yeah, a couple of things. Thank you, mayor. One is, again, we're talking philosophies and maybe practices that are common in, in the industry. Some communities, for instance, it's not uncommon to find that street sweeping is included with a solid waste charge. It just is. And others, they actually set up a separate, other communities set up a separate utility, if you will, a community sanitation service that they have that provides street sweeping, litter control, alleyway cleanups, one-time, big item collections and things like that. And so those things are just charged across households for, that are receiving the services. So it's, you know, it's really a matter of philosophy. As to, I appreciate you're having difficulty with, it seems like these, a number of these things are geared toward... things are geared toward making the general fund whole as opposed to some other focus or goal. I would just point out, and I, for the benefit particularly for two of you that weren't part of my hiring process, and just a reminder for the three that were, these things were discussed. And one of the goals or expectations placed upon me at my hiring was to enhance the general fund revenues without going out and doing tax measures, but finding those things that are just and right and legally defensible to, in essence, make whole rather than having the existing situation that we had where the general fund was underwriting and supporting the enterprises to the tune of about $2 million a year. In other words, that was money that otherwise could be available for what we generally want to preserve the general fund for, and that's funding things like police, fire, parks, street maintenance, things like that, rather than undercutting or, not undercutting, supporting and bringing down utility rates. But again, that's a difference of philosophy. But council's direction, at least to me and therefore to staff, has been to find a way to make the general fund whole when the general fund has been providing services to get reimbursed for that. If there's a different route you wish to go, it's certainly your prerogative to change that focus.
If I can answer some of the, I appreciate the fact of needing to get the general fund whole. And I guess that's what I want to make sure that we're not totally doing here is increasing rates to make the general fund whole. If we're increasing rates because of a cost of service being tried, charged to the enterprise, you know, I'm in full support of that. I guess one of the items that really concerns me here is the budget becomes the driver on a lot of these charges, not the cost of the service being provided, not the direct cost of service being provided to the enterprise. It's, it is the budget. If items go up, if police and fire protection goes up and you're not necessarily doing, providing more service, say, to the wastewater facility, the amount of money that they pay goes up because it's based on the cost in the budget of that service. So, it's not directly the cost being provided, it's the cost of the budget. And I guess that's one of the difficulties. I'm having a hard time getting my arms wrapped around.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, one of the things that's probably unknown to a lot of people and we're dealing with it currently right now is what we call the full cost plan here or the cost allocation plan. And directly inside the cover of it, it says, "The following information has been developed to illustrate how to read and use the cost allocation plan." So, although this is a sizable volume of data contained in the city's plan, it has been designed so the non-technical user can read and interpret it. I'm far below that then because I've been having a hard time with this. One of the things about it, it says, "Essentially, the plan provides a cost accounting of who does what, for whom, in what quantity, and for what total price." And it lists a couple of items, but one of them, number one, is recovery of general fund costs. The administrative departments in the general fund typically provide staff support to enterprise funds and other governmental units, which charge user fees for service. So, we already have this in place. And now, I understand where we're going and what we're trying to do, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a more effective way. Cost allocation on a government facility, we list Civic Center, V Street, and Corporate Yard. I don't think we will be saving money up to rebuild City Hall or anything based on the back of the enterprise funds. Right-of-way maintenance, well, if it's a sewer line that's going to be replaced, then obviously, the wastewater utility at that time should pay the fair share of right-of-way maintenance. So, I mean, remember, we've got two books and millions in this hand, millions of dollars in this hand. And we have utilities in the middle and everybody that's a ratepayer paying left and right. So, I think we need to be careful where we tread with this.
Can I make a comment?
Of course, Ms. Wall.
The cost allocation plan that you're referring to, we did take that to the Utility Commission back in September 2015 and talked to them about what that covers. And one of the things that you should note, that most of the cost allocation plan is operational cost. That means anytime they use the purchasing yard, anytime they get paid, the enterprise funds don't have an individual assigned directly for those costs. So, what we do on a by anno budget is go through and see how many purchase orders they make, see what kind of stock they supply, see the accounts payable, accounts receivable, and we allocate it towards that. There are a lot of things in the cost allocation plan that doesn't cover for the enterprise funds. And one is the building use. And the building use that we have in the enterprise reimbursement study takes that place versus having the building for allocation because we do with Civic Center, Corp. Yard, and other buildings, but no utility funds are charged for that allocation. We do also use any equipment that's used that's through an internal service fund that's charged out. But there are several things that are based on, you know, the admin service charge, which is the use of the city council, the use of the city clerk, use of resolutions and other items that have to be, that is all charged out. And that's not included in the study from HF&amp;H.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I understand. And I mean, there's millions of dollars in this book.
Yes.
And it's moved from here and it's moved to there. But one of the things, and I'm just going to throw an example, we'll use the public safety aspect of this. 1.7 million out of these enterprise funds in this enterprise reimbursement study. It's very hard in my mind. I just cannot believe that the police and fire respond to wastewater, water, and the landfill to the cost of 1.7 million dollars. I look at what we want to do with the trucks. Somebody gave me a whole different pavement index study. It showed trash trucks full, trash trucks empty, what it did on the streets. I'm just having a hard time with this because this seems like it's just going to fund certain little areas. And we don't even have infrastructure repairs on tap yet to do right-of-way maintenance to pull the money. So, I'm just kind of wondering where we really want to go with this and do the increase every year with something that we don't even have a plan with. So...
So, this, the enterprise reimbursement study is a five-year plan. And it does, they do recommend coming back every five years for it. The public safety, everyone that pays property tax, you know, hopes they never have to use the police or fire, but they pay for it because they want the police and fire to be prepared, you know? I hope I never have to use them, but I realize that there is a cost associated with training them, doing the things they need to do, and having them ready to respond to us.
Yeah, but to the tune of 1.7 million a year off of everything else. You know, like you say, property tax, general fund revenues. It's a hard justification for me. When we don't have infrastructure projects, why are we charging right-of-way maintenance? We are not going to be doing anything with Civic Center and all, and we know that we're not going to put this money into a separate account for government facilities. So, it's, when we use the term defensible, in my mind, it says questionable. And I've got lots of questions on this right now.
Okay. Mr. Farmcroft, if you don't mind sticking around, we're going to go to public comment. We may have more questions for you in a few minutes. Do you have a comment?
You know, if you wouldn't mind, I've been trying to think of what I could tell you that would be helpful in your deliberations. I've, you know, come down here from the Bay Area and I might be able to provide you just a little more context for these studies. Back in, well, first of all, I should say, I'm a, most of the time, I spend my work on water, sewer, stormwater rates. I'm pretty familiar with the law around what's reasonable, what's defensible under Prop 218. In 2012, we were contacted by Michael Colentuno, who's one of the state's preeminent legal experts on Prop 218. He wanted us to help a city quantify its reimbursements to the general fund for its enterprises. And this came out of the Roseville decision that said that, the court there said, "There are costs that could be reimbursed, but you can't just pick an arbitrary percentage." That was a problem in Roseville. And the court said, "Cost it out." So, Michael Colentuno said, "Let's figure out how to cost these things out." And so, since then, we're just starting our 10th reimbursement study. We've, I would guess, 20, at least 20 attorneys have reviewed our work along the way. Probably easily 50 or 60 staff people have been involved. The work that you see right now, it reflects the refinements we've made along the way based on a lot of input. I'm very confident in the approach as far as its defensibility goes. And I think I'm in a good position just with my experience in setting rates and being an expert witness in knowing what is defensible. Of the studies that we've done, none of them have been challenged in court. Four of them, four of these cities, were sued for lack of having a report, and our analyses were used in the settlement negotiations. With the other five cities, there has been no litigation once our reports were published. So, that's just the history to date on how these studies are being done. And it's a new type of a study. The, I think the word Councilmember Mosby used was maybe inventive or creative, yeah. It is a new type of a study. And I'm very comfortable with it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to, Mr. Wilkie, did you have something?
Just real briefly, going back to Melinda's slides, this slide is looking at the water, wastewater, and solid waste combined, which are the three utilities that have rate-setting authorities being requested for affirmation tonight. The bar, the bar that's here, as Melinda mentioned, is included in the studies that were produced for water, wastewater, and solid waste as part of those studies. And if we were continuing to use the 1997-98 study, these amounts up here would be what would be charged to water, wastewater, and solid waste in total. And that's part of the study, those amounts are already included as part of the study because that, these rates, these charges have been going on all the way back to 1997-98. The bars are what are included in the final draft study of the enterprise cost study of what should be charged within the three utilities. As you can see, the amounts that are proposed for the current fiscal cycle is less than what would have been charged with these three utilities. I want to make that clear because there's been some comments out there that this is a brand-new fee. And for water, wastewater, and solid waste, it's affirming that we're not charging more than the rates, more than the cost. And one of the reasons why I recommended having this done as part of the 1315 budget was because the rates for water and wastewater are going up, I wanted to make sure that we weren't charging this general fund support more than the cost. So, part of the reason for doing this was to make sure that we were not charging more. And what has turned out for these three utilities is we'll actually be charging less than what was included in the studies. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Councilmember Mosby?
Is that the phased-in numbers? Are those the phased-in numbers?
Correct. And those are the only two periods that anything has been decided on. You, as the governing board, will have a chance to give directions to staff through Patrick for the 17, 19 cycles and beyond. Yes, you're right. It is the first two phased in, which is why the amounts are moving from here to here.
And what would they look like if it was the full amount, the maximum amount?
It's about the same. So, if you go up two, three, four years.
But the phase number, and also doesn't include transit in there, did you have transit in there?
I'm trying to show what the difference is on the three utilities that have rate-setting authorities. So...
Right. Those are the phase numbers. What would be the number here, the non-phase number? I mean, it would be, would it be at the graph or above the 5%? Not what you've put down as recommended in here, but the, what do you call it here? The biggest number that you guys have in here, the final enterprise fund reimbursement...
If you decide to allow it to go all the way to the top, it would be this $10,162 out within two to three budget cycles. But again, I'm stating that there's been no decisions made on 17, 19, 1921, 2123.
What's, I guess that's the deal. What is the limiter that keeps it from going from that?
You guys?
Okay. Now, what, is the service, if it goes to that, is the service being provided to the enterprises doubling?
One of the things that we discussed with the consultant is that this number could be whatever it turns out to be, but if there's no ability to pay, then there's no ability to pay. So, it's a decision that can be made as part of those budgets to say, "We want to have it at X." The recommendation would be to back it up a step. The $10,163 is a maximum. It doesn't say that we have to go to that. The decision to determine what is the amount that you want to do is part of the budget setting process.
And that's what I get about with the graph that you showed earlier. I mean, if you, obviously, if you had the green one there, up, there you go. So, if you put in the other side, you would actually see this to be quite a bit greater without the brakes being put on. This is my point of concern, is the budget becomes the driver, not the cost of the service being provided. So, in other words, you know, there's, it's almost like the sky's the limit, I'm not the sky's the limit, $10.1 million is the limit.
Yeah.
Which is a significant increase in the methodology and support is, it's not the service, the cost of the service directly being provided.
Right. And neither is the upper graph, which is based on 5% of revenues. So, that would go up based on the revenue stream as well. So, you would probably continue to have a separation here even in the, if you decide to have this implemented for 17, 19, there would probably still be a savings to the three rate-setting utilities even through the end of that second cycle.
And likewise, if the wastewater plant were to disappear, the general fund expenditure for public safety would stay the same. It wouldn't reduce if the wastewater plant were to disappear. You would still have that same cost. You wouldn't lay somebody off because the wastewater plant disappeared. It's just, that's, it's not, you know what I'm getting at.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Wouldn't an easier approach be to, instead of taking 5%, just make it 4%?
I may have to, I may let John talk about that a little bit, but with the rates, the rates, I'll just use an example for water. If we continue the 10 and 1/2% increases for the next two years, there's no guarantee that if we looked at this, then the cost, using that is not substantiated, especially by the Roseville decision, because if you're using a percentage, there's no way to tell if you're under cost. And we've been using a percentage since 1997-98 with just the assumption that we wouldn't be going above the cost. But there was no continuing review to see if we were below cost. And that's exactly why we did this, to make sure that we're below cost.
Okay. We're going to go to public comment right now. Those of you that wish to speak on this item, you have three minutes.
My name is Ron Fink, and I'm here to represent the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association. I'm also a resident of Lumbo. I'm also a resident of Lompoc. Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association has carefully reviewed the staff reports and the enterprise reimbursement fund study and several reference documents, and we've reached the following conclusions. We think that some level of cost reimbursement is reasonable and can be justified. However, the methodology used in the reimbursement study report relies totally on a position of establishing proportional fees, which seem to contradict the court's finding in Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association versus the city of Roseville that's referenced in the report. The study doesn't meet the test of establishing reasonably represented costs rather than relying solely on proportional fees. The study employs a flawed methodology to determine reasonably represented costs that neither the study nor the staff report established who paid for these facilities. Was it the general fund? Or was it the enterprise funds that paid to build the facilities? And that's an important factor in determining how to charge funds. In order to convince us, the taxpayers and ratepayers of Lompoc, that the transfer of funds from a publicly owned and operated fee-supported utility to a general fund, property, tax, sales-supported service, without a public vote, is reasonable, you must develop a method that accounts for all the material and labor costs associated with the direct services that are provided. This is how you'd pay somebody if you're in business. If they come to do your house, you know, modernize your house, cost and materials. Page 15 of the studies, the consultants say, the form of repayment is patterned after a methodology approved by regulatory commissions such as the Public Utility Convention by which investor-owned utilities are allowed to recover costs. I would remind you that in Lompoc, they are not investor-owned for-profit facilities. They are publicly owned facilities that operate at no profit, in theory. In the case of HETA versus the city of Roseville, the judge found that they had violated Section 6B of Proposition 218. A portion of that says, "A fee or charge shall not be extended, imposed or increased by any agency unless it meets the following requirement. No fee or charge may be imposed for general governmental services, including but not limited to police, fire, ambulance or library services, where the service is available to the public at large substantially in the same manner as it is to property owners." I've reached my time limit, and so—
Mr. Fink, I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Do you have any specific concerns with the proposal? And what would be your recommendations?
Yes, I have quite a few. As a matter of fact, we've provided each of you an electronic copy of a letter from the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association. I provided a hard copy to the clerk. Our analysis was fairly in-depth. We picked this thing apart. We know that the water, wastewater and solid waste are subject to Prop. 218 and electric subject to Prop. 26. Okay? The authority to assess enterprise funds specifies that no property-related fee can be levied to pay for general, as I mentioned, for general public service. So we go down, we'll start with the assumptions portion of it. Now, in my professional, I prepared a number of reports for the government. I responded to a number of our requests for proposals, and every time we did, we always put in assumptions. The assumptions were alibis. The alibi was because the government didn't tell us everything they wanted. So this consultant is no different. He provided a number of things in here that were more or less alibis. For example, on page seven, they say, well, they're talking about Roseville case again, which I already discussed, I won't waste your time on that. But in regard to the fees, they use the proportional method. When you actually have a tool available to you, which is called the master fee schedule, which establishes the costs that I would have to pay, say, if I had a permit issued to build something at my house, a permit fee and everything else, you have a fee schedule available. So there's a tool available to assess the appropriate fees to the general fund for service back to the utility. On page nine, they say, "Because public property is tax-exempt, it has no assessed valuation." You might recall a few months ago, you were discussing relocating Fire Station 2. Somehow, the city came up with a cost to rent that property. So there is a way to establish an assessed valuation for something because you already did it. Page eight talks about public safety funds, saying, "The enterprise share of the costs associated with public safety should be commensurate with the services received." I agree. What are the services received? As Melinda suggested, I pay property tax, and so do all of you that live in the city for police and fire services. Okay, so why, as a ratepayer, should I pay to maintain that standing force for something that I already paid to have the standing force available to respond to all these variety of things that could occur? And I believe councilmember Starbuck mentioned, how many times do you suppose that the fire department's going to have to go zipping over to the wastewater treatment plant? They're probably not ever going to have to go there unless they go there for a fire inspection or something. So, and it doesn't seem reasonable. Reasonable, keep reasonable in mind. Okay? As councilmember Mosby mentioned, it's proportional. It's all based on budget. It's not based on services provided, it's based on a portion of the budget. That's not a reasonable way to do this. Consultant also says that the city's inventory of its infrastructure may be incomplete. Okay? Maybe you didn't tell them all the facilities you had, or maybe you didn't know. The same way with the dates that they were acquired. I mean, almost all of this stuff has existed here. I've been here since 1975, and I remember distinctly going to training sessions at the wastewater treatment facility that existed in its current footprint in 1980. So it's been there for a long time. The airport, airport was transitioned to the city, what, in the late 80s, Wayne? Yeah. So it's been around for quite a while. Plus, they did a major runway extension and all the other improvements they've done. So, you know, we're kind of curious about how they arrived at these dates of how they were acquired. I mentioned the Public Utilities Commission, and it was for financed facilities that were bought and paid for for a for-profit institution. And of course, Lompoc, that is the situation here in Lompoc. We ratepayers own all of the stuff that serves us. Start talking about right-of-way maintenance on page 20. Study says, "The Department of Public Works doesn't seek direct reimbursement from the enterprises for right-of-way maintenance." Why not? If they have to go out there and repair something that one of the enterprise funds, for example, had to open a sidewalk or a street to repair something, and the Public Works Department goes over there once again, it's time and materials. How much time did it take them, and how much materials did they use to fix that? That's a legitimate cost in our minds that could be transferred from the enterprise back over to the general fund. Not a set percentage every year, just in case they might dig a hole. Vehicle license, there's other ways to do right-of-way maintenance and collect funds. For example, the California vehicle license fees, all of the city vehicles, of course, are exempt. It would seem reasonable to the Taxpayers Association that if you determined what those fees would be if you had to pay them, and you put that into a fund for street maintenance, that that might be a reasonable expense. The other way to do it is through gasoline sales taxes, which a portion of those go for street maintenance. The city doesn't pay tax on the fuel that it uses for the vehicle, so it would seem reasonable that if you use the amount of tax that would have been charged and send that over to street maintenance, that that might be a reasonable charge. There's also a U.S. Department of Transportation study. They have the Federal Highway Administration put out, and they base their stuff on weight. So there are acceptable methods available to determine these costs, but proportional fees is not one of them. And that's pretty much sums up our concerns with this particular thing. And we would pose this as it's been presented and suggest that you direct the staff to re-accomplish the study.
Remind me never to ask you a question after your bedtime.
It is, it's like way past my bedtime. And I don't know, maybe those other guys earlier, they took up all my bedtimes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Fink.
Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Counselor Mayor, John Lynn. We had extensive discussions about this at the utility commission, and I think you may have gotten our resolution, but just in case, I brought a copy. I think it may have been included in the staff report, but I apologize, I didn't get all the way down to the bottom of the staff report. So I'm going to just talk about a couple of things, because there are other speakers that—we kind of divided this up, so it made a little more sense. With regard to the reimbursement for police and fire, I think Ron's absolutely spot-on. The methodology is incorrect. And I think this little chart here makes it pretty easy to see the difference. And what we have on here are a listing of the facilities and the vehicles that need to be protected by police and fire services. And then to the right is the charge. So you have to ask yourself, if the solid waste division has a large landfill with a hazardous waste facility, and a large storage yard with a hazardous waste facility, and 11 heavy-duty trucks that operate on an aggregate top-end weight of about 44,000 pounds, and four light-duty trucks, would it be reasonable for them to pay $9,244 as opposed to a wastewater plant, which is a single facility, some collection lines that nobody can see, and saboteurs really don't want to go after sewer lines? Two heavy trucks and five light trucks, should they pay $687,000? I think the question probably is, no, that's not an equitable way to do it. I think there are better ways, and frankly, I would advocate for the council putting together a group of citizens to take a run at this, because we work for free, and Jack Rodenhyde already volunteered. My job was to research the impact of utility cuts on streets. And so I brought you these really two fat reports for the record. I don't expect you to read them. Instead, we excerpted the important pages out. And the one from Santa Cruz is kind of parallel to us, because the weather is kind of similar. And probably the most exciting part about that is, it nails it down to two separate factors. One, the age of the street, and then what the cost per square foot is for the repair. And it's really, really simple. I also have here a copy of a study from Seattle. And what's kind of interesting about the Seattle study is, it has a lot of individual studies that it cited down below, so that you have some other ones that could be used. And my time is up. If there's any questions, I won't answer them quite as long as Ron did, because he covered most of it. Anything that I missed for anyone?
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
So, my name is Jack Rodenhyde, Lompoc resident. Enterprise reimbursement study, or ERS, commissioned by the city, makes several claims of costs that are unsupported. For example, on the matter of public safety, because the value of the wastewater treatment plant is set at over $195 million, the study claims that the city actually spends over $687,000 protecting it each year. The ERS makes this conclusion based on an unsupported assertion that cost is incurred proportionally to the value of the property protected. Without an accounting of the people and equipment deployed, it's not possible to justify this charge. And it makes no sense. If the plant were suddenly removed from the city, you wouldn't expect the public safety budgets to drop by that amount. Charge is not supported by the ERS. I also want to address the cost of surface impacts to the right-of-way created by city enterprise fund activities. The ERS calculates that of the over $3 million in costs they attribute to vehicles, almost $829,000, or 26%, is caused by refuse vehicles, and over $580,000, or 18%, is caused by transit vehicles. Since they did not disclose their methodology, it is only possible to judge the reasonableness of their results. The Department of Transportation has assessed what they call 3R costs, or road reconstruction, resurfacing and rehabilitation costs for several kinds of vehicles. In their most recent year 2000 report, they found that a three-axle vehicle weighing 50,000 pounds, like our refuse vehicles, would create an inflation-adjusted 3R cost of about 8 cents a mile, while a two-axle vehicle, like our Colt buses, would occasion a cost of about 10 and 1/2 cents per mile. If the refuse trucks cause costs at this rate, it would take over $10 million to incur the cost that the ERS proposes. That's almost 22 round trips to the moon every year, or an entire circuit of the 136 miles of streets in Lompoc every seven minutes. The transit buses would be making a complete circuit of town every 12 minutes. These are not reasonable results and call into question the methodology employed. The proposed costs are not supported by the ERS. Given the transaction costs a city's experienced with an independent consultant, it would be wise to consider another option. I ask that the city council appoint an ad hoc advisory board to meet and consider the evidence presented by the consultants and any other appropriate evidence to produce a reimbursement plan that is supportable where the ERS is not, and one that is fair to the citizens of Lompoc.
Thank you, Mr. Rodenhyde. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Al Clark, and I live here in Lompoc, too. You've heard several well-reasoned and compelling arguments that challenge the cost estimates in this reimbursement study, both from the utility commission's recommendation to you and from the citizens who came forth tonight. It's no secret that flawed assumptions and methods lead to erroneous results. In this case, they resulted in the contractor consistently overestimating the reimbursements, sometimes by a factor of 10. This begs the question, how did a study this flawed get this far? And is it unreasonable for us to expect the city's staff review would have found at least some of the problems the utility commission and public comments addressed? After reading this study, my conclusion was that the real purpose was to provide staff with an analysis that shows how $5 million can be added to the general fund in a way that would not seem to break any laws, and would avoid having to ask residents to vote on a sales tax increase. I'm just saying. For the enterprises that are supported by rate revenue, the study recommends that they increase the rates in order to replace the reimbursements. Thus, by overcharging the enterprises, you would force them to overcharge their customers. And seeing as how these reimbursements would impact our utility rates, it seems appropriate that this discussion would have included an estimate of the impact on our utility bills. But neither the study nor the staff report provide that information. So tonight, you are in the unenviable position of being asked to make a decision based on a flawed study and with no assessment of the financial impact it would have on your constituents. Here's what could happen, should you adopt this resolution. Here's what could happen, should you adopt this resolution. Due to excessive reimbursements, sooner or later, the enterprises that have rate revenue will cease being competitive with other public utility providers, and the residents will rightfully demand that the city outsource those services. And outsourcing utilities would not be unusual. I've lived in nine cities in eight different states, and Lompoc is the only one that provides four utilities. That is water, lights, trash, and sewer. In closing, I hope you all had an opportunity to review the 2014-2015 Grand Jury Report on the city of Guadalupe's financial condition. That jury found the city had inappropriately transferred amounts from restricted funds to the general fund that were over and above reasonable allocations. In my opinion, adopting this analysis would be the beginning of your trip down that path that contributed to Guadalupe's financial woes.
Can you wrap it up?
So I ask you, in consideration of the hard-working people of our community, please do not adopt this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, please.
Good evening, Jane Bear. I just want to thank Councilmember Mosby and Councilmember Starbuck, because I'm listening to you ask questions, and it's clear to me that you are less concerned about what is legally defensible than what is actually fair. And I appreciate that. That is what I would expect city council members to be concerned about, what is fair. And I certainly wouldn't blame the consultant, because I think the consultant was, was giving guidance to get as much money out, out of the utilities as they possibly could. So I, I can't, I can't blame this guy. I, I just think that it's good that we have folks who are elected and who are here to represent us, who, who are paying attention. And, and I can't even imagine how much work that is to sort through all that stuff, so I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Wiki Rodenhy. We have been told our city does not generate enough general fund revenue to support its current level of general fund services. You're being asked tonight to fund the shortfall by finding supplemental revenue in the city's enterprise funds. If approved, the enterprise fund departments will need to find more funds to replace this taking, to operate their, the city's businesses. Ultimately, this issue will be funded by higher utility rates. We all remember how uncomfortable Lompoc was a few years ago with a release, with the release of the Grand Jury Report, a failure of oversight. I'd like to remind you of last year's Grand Jury Report entitled, "Guadalupe Shell Game Must End." The described circumstances sound very much like the evolution of what is proposed here tonight. The Grand Jury focused on what they called inappropriate inter-fund transfers between the city's special or enterprise funds and their general fund. Let me quote from the Grand Jury Report. "The city's many years of inappropriate transfers of restricted funds to the general fund were revealed in 2014. The inappropriate transfers of restricted funds included money intended for lighting, solid waste, water, and wastewater treatment funds. Generally accepted accounting principles allow a city to allocate a reasonable portion of its general overhead to the special funds, in acknowledgement of the personnel time required to administer the funds. The amount allocated should be based on a documented cost allocation plan. Over the last 12 years, the jury estimates that these inappropriate transfers totaled millions. These funds should have been spent on specific product, projects for which the money was collected, such as repairing streets and other infrastructure, and building a reserve to handle emergencies. The money instead, inappropriately, was diverted to the general fund to pay for various city operations, such as police, fire, city council administration, city attorney, parks and recreation, building maintenance, permits, and finance. The Guadalupe City Council has been using these general fund overhead allocations as a way to cover ongoing budget deficits. These inter-fund transfers could have been appropriate if the city had put in place agreements with repayment schedules..." "...had put in place loan agreements with repayment schedules, and the city council had approved them by resolution. Witness after witness confirmed that no such agreements exist, and the city council never approved such loans." That's the end of my quote. "This evening, we've heard from a variety of people who, under other circumstances, wouldn't be caught dead speaking in support of the same topic. It's good to see."
Okay, I need to wrap it up, Ms. Rodenhy.
"I urge you all to reject this inter-fund transfer proposal. It's a slippery slope." Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Pam Wall, local resident. I wasn't going to speak, but Ms. Bear, thank the Councilmember Mosby and Councilmember Starbuck for asking the questions, and I thank you for bringing this back and not just signing off on it. But I'd like to thank the residents that spent considerable time digging into this, and what they brought forward tonight. And I would support the recommendation. The staff has had their chance at this, and this is where we've gotten. Also mention that the maximum without sending out for an RFP for a consultant, I believe, is $30,000. And you mentioned that, actually, when you spoke, I think in March, that it was just under $30,000, so maybe that was the intent. But please, take this out of their hands, and let these, I would say, expert residents who have spent the time and trouble to dig into this and actually provide you with some valid information, to take a shot at this before we go any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I just want to remind you that if we pass this, well, the general fund will be taken care of, because if we have a break, or have to repair any of the lines or anything like that, it's going to have to come out of the general fund, because you're taking all our money away from us. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, you, you gotta think twice how you're going to vote and everything. And I got one little thing here, you know. In about 1990, the fire department decided they didn't want to take care of fire plugs anymore, so we had to hire two guys in the water department to go out and take care of the fire hydrants, clean the weeds, paint them, and everything, and make sure they were all right. So, you know, in this redistribution thing, you know, the water department is supposed to pay for public safety for the fire department when we're already doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close, close public comment, and I'm gonna, Mr. Farmcroft, did you want to make any comments on public comment?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. A lot of things were said. Let me begin with the, the reference to Article 13D, Section 6B. There are five subsections in 6B. The claim was made that you can't set a fee to cover public safety costs that are already covered through taxes. You need to understand that the enterprise reimbursement study is not deriving a fee under that section of Prop. 218. It's simply determining a portion of the costs that the general fund is providing to the enterprises, so it's not a fee. The proper section that should have been referred to in the Roseville decision is Section 6B 1 and 2. The comment was also made that we're using a proportional method, and I'm not exactly sure what, how to understand that, but what we have been doing is complying with Article 13D, Section 6B 3, that says that fees, property-related fees, water, sewer, solid waste, need to be proportional to the cost of providing service. That's Prop. 218's required to do that, and so we are proportioning these costs. To think that you should do it any other way is wrong. What we have not done, though, is approach this from the standpoint that we are trying to fill a hole in the general fund. We were never guided or requested to do that. The numbers that were presented tonight about what the current charges are, this is the first time I've seen those. I didn't ask to see them before. I did not want to be influenced by knowing what those current charges were. We did a completely independent study, and we were not asked to try to come up with a methodology to fill a hole in the general fund.
Well, I've taken two pages of notes, and I probably noted at least a couple of dozen things, and I don't know if you want me to go through those right now. It's already getting late.
Sure, okay. I want to thank you for your time. I also want to let you know that I think you're an honorable individual, your, your firm is honorable, and I think you provided the information you, you were asked to provide, and I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, with that, based on the discussion this evening, I want to move that we continue this item. I'd also like to include in my motion that we appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of Jack Rodenhy, a resident of Lompoc and a CPA, Ron Fink, a resident of Lompoc and member of the Santa Barbara Taxpayers Association, Brad Wilke, our city's finance director, Councilmember Mosby, and myself. This committee will take the study performed by the consultant, analyze it, and come back to the council in 60 days with a recommendation. That 60 days will be approximately July 19th. With that motion, I'd like a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. In doing so, I was going to come in the same thing with the advisory committee, you selected them. I think that's what, a lot of good information's came here tonight, came from the, both from the council chambers, and also from the audience. And I think by doing it, have an advisory like you have, set up a committee with the people there, they'll come back with the recommendations that we can handle.
Okay, we have motion and second discussion. Start with Councilmember Mosby.
Can you add with the, the notes and stuff that, I guess you had some more of the comments or something that the consultant did for the public comment and stuff, that that could be added to that as well?
I believe so. Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
One of the things that I would like to ask, if this ad hoc passes, is if we could compress it from 60 days, maybe to 30 or something, get it much sooner. I think that everybody that you've named has a pretty good idea of what's going on here, because this is going to directly affect the item that we just postponed. So we wouldn't want to vote on a rate increase, because we don't know what we're going to do with the enterprise reimbursement. So rather than put the rate increase out to 90 days, if we could do the rate increase in 60 days, and the ad hoc in 30, I mean, maybe a compression or something along that line.
Yes, except I've already spoke to at least one of the individuals, and they feel 60 days would be appropriate. And we've already taken this out months, and I'd rather do it, get it done right. Excuse me, I'm not saying it wasn't done right. No, I, really, seriously. But let's, let's get all the weeds...
No, I'm fine with that. I just, like I said, I'm not comfortable going into the rate increases that need to happen also.
Councilmember Vega.
Yes, I'd like to thank all the people that were involved, you know, Mr. Rodenhy, Ron Fink, Alan Clark, all the people that spoke, Jane Bear. You know, this is what it's all about. This is what I liked. We're learning as we go, but for us to take our time and sort this out is the best way to go. And also, I'd like to thank Councilman Mosby and Starbuck for the extra questions, actually, on their request. That's why they were very prepared, so that's good to see. Before we pretty much, in, in, put in more increases without any substance or basis, okay, that we don't understand, I just, I, I just agree that we should understand what we do here, instead of just saying yes. Okay? That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, so before I call for a vote, Mr. Farmcroft, or Councilmember Mosby? Thank you.
I need to get on your better eye, I guess, whether... Just, just one thing I want to reiterate, that this, this is, you know, very important, that this is, this is something that's going to potentially be used for many, many years, and involves tens of millions of dollars. This isn't a, a just, well, we were 5%, we're just going to go this way, when, you know, I really do think that it needs to be, you know, granted, it's, it's, it's asking, you know, more time for staff and more time for, for us as well, but it's, this is a significant movement that's going on here. It's not, it's not just a, you know, it's not just a walk in the park.
So before I call for a vote, last, Mr. Farmcroft, if you can share your notes with maybe Mr. Fink or Mr. Rodenhy, or maybe get them to us in an email?
Yes, no, I'd be very happy to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, with that being said, let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay. Okay. Meeting is called back to order. We're going to go back to item number six. Yeah, we're ready to go. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if, all the councils here, I'll wait. If, if council's ready to make some consideration on, on the rates, having just heard the discussion for item number seven, and understanding that the orders of magnitude of how we adopt rates and, and the contributing components are apparently essential issues, that, that certainly was proved out by all the comments that were there, I think that reflects that. Then, I appreciated particularly Member Starbuck's observation that even processing through something like a 60-day window on, on the reimbursement analysis report impacts the rate adoption. And waiting even one month, waiting even 30 days without doing any implementation of the rate, would have an impact on the utilities that far outweighs even the most extreme ends of what might be covered within the, within the reimbursement analysis report. So even if you took extreme positions from one to the other, you couldn't cover as much as what's going to be impacted by a delay in the adoption of rates by even one month. So if, I assume the orders of magnitude are critical issues, or we wouldn't have spent that much time discussing, and now preparing this much analysis going forward on the reimbursement analysis report. Therefore, I recommend to you that you proceed and approve and adopt the, the rates as presented, with the exception, and that we might pull out that component of the rate that is, so that the only amount of adjustments to the utility rates are that which is not reflected in the reimbursement analysis report. So going forward, your ad hoc committee is going to examine the reimbursement analysis report, find what is the appropriate components of charges. And so what I'm suggesting is, for the balance of, of the rest of, of the adjustments that would have been attributable to everything else, that you would go ahead and, and approve those recommendations. And we'll subtract out anything that's... out anything that's reflected within the reimbursement analysis report. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
I can agree with moving forward with the item number six, because I think it's important that we put it on the table, because money that potentially is lost here has got to be made up somewhere else. So delaying this further, I believe it needs to, if there is an adjustment through the enterprise reimbursement analysis, I feel that that can be done after the fact. However, I think if we move forward this way, I would like to take these one at a time, the water one at a time, wastewater one at a time, and solid waste one at a time, and move through them, because I think there's significant reasons to do different things for each one of those.
Go ahead, take the first one.
Take the first one, we'll take.
And by the way, we've already had public comment on this, so this is, we've continued it, so this is the council discussion after public comment. Okay? Go ahead.
Okay, the water charge that we implemented last year, we heard that we had approximately forty-five, fifty percent is what we recovered with the charge that we put through, and it seems that we're down a vicious cycle by putting increases on the units. When people have the opportunity to conserve out, that's what's happening, and what ends up happening is we have to raise it again. And what ends up happening, we raise it again. And then we penalize people for using the service, the reduced quality of life. We've already seen lawns all around going brown, and people, you know, I hear people talking about, you know, holding back in their house multiple, multiple times before they flush, and moving into the conservation aspect significantly. So what isn't happening is, we raise the rate on the unit of water, people conserve more, we need to raise it more. And it kind of shows with the last rate increase that we had of seven and a half percent, when we got barely forty-five percent of what we achieved. In any book, when you do, you know, something like that, that's a failure. And I believe that what we should have done, and as the consultant had said in the past, it was important, if you want to get your rate, you put more on the meter and less on the unit of water, where I know it's difficult for the people in town, but I also know it's difficult for the enterprises to keep going, and we need this revenue for specific reasons. And in my situation, and looking at this, it's twenty-three point six percent that they're asking is the total, if there's a component of that that, of course, is the water unit charge, and a component of that is the meter charge, and my recommendation is to not do any increase on the unit charge, because you're getting, you're not getting the revenue, you just keep raising the rate and you're not giving it. Where you would put the increase on the meter charge, because I know the city's trying to achieve a certain goal, and it seems kind of foolhardy to keep going out and doing something that's not working. And there is a chart, I don't know, that breaks down, I don't know if you guys have some numbers on meter charges, but there is one that was out there from the original hearing on August sixth, two thousand and thirteen, and my recommendation is, of course, with continued discussion, is that we don't put increase the unit charge of the water, because we are penalizing the people for using the service in the aspect of the rate, and people are finding a way to conserve out of it, so we're not gaining what we need to do. But if we did it, just the movement of the meter charge, and as an example for the five-eighths meter as written, July first, two thousand and fifteen, it was a thirty-one dollar and thirty-six cents, and raising that to thirty-six oh six as for seven one, two thousand and sixteen, which we would pretty much get a hundred percent of that unless somebody wasn't paying their bill, but if we could do, get a hundred percent of it, I think that's important. Granted, there's probably going to have to be another two eighteen study as things progress, because we're going to see that there's more money going down, but that's my recommendation.
Any other discussion? So, City Manager, do you have a comment on that?
Well, you heard my recommendation. My recommendation is for both the meter charge and the volumetric charge, that you would adopt the proposed amounts, less the component that is being studied regarding the reimbursement analysis report.
Okay. Any other discussion? I need a motion. This is just on the water.
I would make a motion to move forward, as my suggestion was to not raise the unit charge on the water, but to move forward and ask for this chart. I believe those are the numbers where we are. Am I on the right chart? And to move forward with the meter charges as per the study, but not with the per-unit charge. That also does make up for the, there was a degree of charge that we didn't charge the last time, there was a little percentage as well.
There's seven point five percent on the meters we didn't.
Right, so this would bring this up on the meter charge, but not doing, you know, that's my motion, so I'd need a second.
I'll give a second.
Just a question, what would the meter charge be then?
What's on the, the meter charge would be what is on the first resolution in two thousand and thirteen, so it would depend upon the meter itself, but.
Could I just have a minute to look at this real fast? I just.
Go ahead.
Can I just state to you?
Sure, go ahead.
Because the meter charge is a third of the, makes up the, the volume is about two-thirds, and the meter charge is a third, so that would be about eight point five percent overall versus the twenty-three point six-three that we were recommending.
And if I could answer that, if you do increase the water unit charge, you're not going to get what you want, because people are just going to stop using water that much more. I think it was proven the last time, when we tried to do that, you probably did get the meter charge last time, and you probably got people using that much less water, and people in this town are afraid to use water, which eventually down the road, you're going to see the effect on the wastewater, and it might take two, three, four years, so you're chasing your own tail again, and we're going around and around. We know, we know what we need to get, and if I'm still on this council in the future, I will be highly supportive that we know how much money we need to get, and we know to go to the best methodology to get that money, and not force conservation by raising rates.
I guess my last question here would be, would this get us to where we need to be in this enterprise fund in water, if we did just the meter?
To get us where we need to be is, we need the twenty-three point six percent increase to, and that's what the consultant suggested in two thousand and thirteen when we reviewed it. Things like the drought, that people have used less water because of that, and to save costs, they've used less water.
So what would the percentage increase be with the meter then?
For the increase in meter, the twenty-three percent increase in the meter component, would be an eight point five percent increase overall.
That's eight point five guaranteed, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which would in turn, to the revenues, be almost three times what you got last time with the latter increase, last increase, so I'm giving you a significant, I mean, and granted, I know it's difficult for the people, but they stopped chasing our tails and not getting what we're needed to get anyways.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Could we repeat the motion real quick, please?
Mr. Mosby.
We waive the increase on the unit of water charge, but put, implement as per the chart here for the meter charge.
Is everyone clear on that? Okay. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes five zero. Okay.
So just for the record, you adopted the resolution that's here with the amendments to reflect what you just did, right? So we don't have to bring the resolution back? We're going to amend the resolution to do what you just approved, but we're not going to bring a resolution back, we just passed the resolution as amended.
That is my understanding, Mr. Councilmember Mosby? Yes, okay. Okay, next would be wastewater, well, you know, I guess wastewater still. Go ahead.
You want to fire away on that one?
Go ahead.
As much as I've heard people say that we are in dire needs of not raising the wastewater rate, I can't see any other way out of it. We do have a hundred-plus million-dollar facility there that needs to be taken care of. We do have a hundred and some odd miles of sewer lines, and we do have a reserve balance we need to come up with, and as much as I would like to not make a recommendation, we didn't make that increase, I think we have to make the recommended increase as per the resolution.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
And we have discussion. Let's vote. That passes four one. Yes. Okay, solid waste, Mr. Mosby. You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll.
I love it when other people recommend rate increases.
I, well, that was already passed by you a number of years ago. I'm just, again, with solid waste, much the same as the wastewater, we do have a gas collection system mandated by APCD, we have a significant expense, and we have some past debt that's still being paid off, and I believe we have to go with the staff's recommendation of the resolution as written. That's three point five, I believe, wasn't it?
Three point six.
Three point six.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. Let's vote. That passes four one. I believe that takes care of that. Melinda, is that, that takes care of that one? Okay, let's move on to item number eight. This is award a contract to transit systems operating services. This is Mr. Frimbaugh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff recommendation to award contract for the RFP sixteen dash D one, dash O one to RMS Management Services for approximately five point four million dollars over the next five years, and to authorize the city manager to execute that contract. Contract with our current operations provider, Store Transit Services expires June thirtieth. Therefore, in March of this year, we released an RFP to select a contractor for the next contract period. Two proposals were received and opened on March twenty-fourth, two proposers were Store, our current contractor, and RMS Management Services of Camarillo. Both proposals were evaluated, both interviews, both vendors were interviewed as part of the selection process. The evaluation panel scored both proposers to be responsible and qualified transportation management companies. However, when the points were tallied, RMS received the highest rating by the panel. During the transition period, RMS will offer all current store employees who meet employer requirements the opportunity to transition to the RMS team as required under California Labor Code. Financial impact over the next five years, approximately five point four million dollars will be the cost at the proposed beginning revenue rate of fifty dollars and fifty-two cents per hour compared with Store's proposal of sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents per hour. The savings between the two, with RMS receiving the contract, will be approximately one point six million dollars over a five-year period. Staff recommends RMS be awarded the transit contract in accordance with Municipal Code Section three point three, six point oh four, contract funded out of account number twenty-three thousand dash fifty-three, four, four, nine. Term of the contract is five years, with two additional years available if mutually agreeable by both parties. Questions?
The two years additional, that's at the current contract that we'd be signing?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Frimbaugh? Okay, we'll open this up to public comment.
I'm Long Polk resident, I just have a question. You just raised the rates on transportation in town, and you have to meet, what was it, twenty percent, and we were meeting three? What happens if we don't? Do they have to shut down? I mean, what happens? I think you're going to have a lot fewer riders, so it'd probably get worse. You're signing a contract for five years, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take, okay, I'll briefly try to answer that. We have, yeah, Richard, you want to try and answer that? Good idea.
Yes, as I stated, the current contract runs out June thirtieth. If we don't have a contract in place, then our current contractor has stated that they will not continue under the next option year, so we would be out of service.
Okay. I don't think that quite answers your question. Our question was, if we increase rates and we don't have any riders, are we just going to go out of business for our bus service?
Yeah, the increased rates were just on ADA service in the Santa Barbara shuttle. There is no increase on rates on our regular fifth route service, but those stayed the same.
Okay, good. Any other public comment? Close public comment, bring it back to the council.
Staff's recommendation.
Okay. Staff recommendation?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? And let's vote. That passes five zero. Okay. Item number nine, this is request for additional funds to purchase mobile data computers and dash cameras for patrol vehicles. Police Chief Pat Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is a request to ask for an additional sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty-six cents. I'll summarize the request. Last June, I came and asked for dash cameras and mobile data computers inside the police cars, and you granted a hundred and seven thousand dollars for MDCs and a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for dash cameras. We then put together RFP, put it out in December, and Captain Lardner's here, he put together a team to vet the vendors, we pushed it out to ninety vendors, and we came up with the two vendors, and the, the MDCs end up costing an additional forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-six cents, and then the cameras were an additional eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars over what we requested. And so we would really like this technology, I said that last summer, and we just had, we didn't have, we didn't put out RFP to get our bids, we just got bids to come and ask for what we wanted. We did, we did make a mistake on the MDCs, and some of that is ours and our technical advisors, but that's, you know, a year-old bid, so that's why it's sixty-eight, sixty-seven thousand dollars more.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Chief, this was from our previous amount of money that we passed, correct? I mean, this is what we need to shore up the deal and basically get you what we wanted to get you in the first time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Twenty-six months, it's an odd figure. Is there something that we're required to hold twenty-six months of data for each of these?
Well, that's the standard, because we can, you know, for court evidence, and also for being lawsuits, civil liability, that kind of stuff. So, and there's different intentions, you know, if there was a violent crime or something and we got a piece of that on the camera, we would keep that a lot longer, any homicide cases, we would keep that forever, you know, so there's, it kind of averages out. The day-to-day stuff, we keep, we would like to keep it for two years, some departments keep it twelve months, but if it gets erased at twelve months and you get sued at fourteen months, you don't have it.
Yeah, just. Yeah, I'm just, I'm educating myself real quickly here. Isn't there a way you could download those computers into something and then continue a cycle, or after twenty-six months, it just goes away, or it's?
You know, I'll defer to the expert here. He spent a lot of time talking to the folks that came and talked to us.
Just a visitor here. So, the industry standard is twenty-four months to hold video. So, a lot of, what, for example, the Sheriff's Department, they found that their county council recommended that they hold their material for at least three years. They could be sued up to two years for whatever type of an action it is, civil action, or whatever type of action it's going to be. And this gives them some time to, to make that request go through their bureaucracy to actually extrapolate that video or that audio recording that's going to be needed for court to defend themselves against a false arrest for DUI investigation, for example. And then they will be able to go ahead and present that in court. So they're giving themselves about two months of playtime after the twenty-four months to actually get this material and then hold on to it as it makes its way through the process of the Sheriff's Department. In contacting other agencies, they're doing the same thing. They're at about twenty-four months, and then they give themselves a month to two months afterwards for retention. So, the question is, can we download it off the servers? Yes, we can, but then we'd have to have some type of other internet, or if it's internet-related, it's going to have to be CGS compliant, Criminal Justice Information System compliant, which can be expensive. If we have another type of a database at the agency, then we're going to go ahead and have to buy a whole new database and a whole new, basically an interface, to make this system work with the other system to download, download it once it loops around to the twenty-six-month period. Or if we just go with twenty-four months, to a twenty-four-month period onto this database. It's kind of like having, in the old days, two cassette recorders. You want to record off of one to the other, you have to have two different systems.
Have you got room for all this?
We were asking for a new police station eventually. That's coming in the CIP. You asked.
If you're talking about, if I, if I may, and if you're talking about room for storage and all of that?
Equipment, I think you're saying.
Well, besides that, but the, there's a separate component of this, and we just want to make sure we divulge that, because we'll eventually have to come back with physical storage space as well. I'd probably estimate it somewhere around, we thought, a hundred-and-sixty thousand or something like that. But that's not what you're being asked to, we want to make you aware that that is a, that's a component of this eventually, but that's not what we're presenting tonight. Tonight, we're presenting for the hardware, if you will, up front.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Let's go to public comment.
Jane Barrett. Chief Walsh and I were having a friendly disagreement earlier at Chauya about whether or not you can spend forfeiture money on this request. And Chief Walsh thinks that, that you can't. I think you can. And you may still decide that the best use of the money, the forfeiture money, is to spend it on an armored vehicle, which I'm pretty sure Chief Walsh doesn't want me to call it an armored vehicle. He wants me to call it a...
Rescue?
Rescue vehicle. Rescue vehicle. So, I'm not speaking against the rescue vehicle, but, but I guess I would like to get our facts straight about whether or not you could actually spend forfeiture money on this. The, in, in the staff report for the rescue vehicle, you, it said that you can't use the forfeiture money for anything that's been under consideration or partially funded. And Chief Walsh and I looked over the document together, and I, I didn't see that. Anything, the, the purpose of the, the rules that the Department of Justice put out is so that you don't basically say, oh, we got two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the police department, so now we're going to take away two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, you, you're giving them extra money, and in my opinion, you can use the forfeiture funds to do that. And that's what I believe this document says, and I've highlighted it. This would be useful to you also when you're considering the rescue vehicle, because I don't think we've had enough time to think about whether or not we want a rescue vehicle in our community. I think that's controversial, and, and Chief Walsh has gone aways, I have to admit, to convincing me, and you see, I'm calling it a rescue vehicle, so I'm already halfway convinced. He said he'd bring a picture, I don't know if he did, but I, I think you need to know what else this money could be spent on. And the document that I've given you there has permissible uses. It could be used for community education. It could be used for gang violence. It could be used for investigations. It could be used for overtime, all of those that are listed as permissible uses. So I guess I just want you to make, in the interest of transparency, I, I want you to consider all your options, and one of the things you could spend this money on is the cams that you're being asked to consider in this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm all local resident. I've been badged. I'm sure the city attorney will give you a legal answer on what money can be spent for this, but I would support this. I think people across the nation would like to see these cams in our police cars. And it's both for our police officers as well as the public, so I personally support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. What's your decision? Oh, Chief?
Well, I, I just, I just want to comment on, on the money. Yeah, I could use federal forfeiture money for items, but I'm going to talk about that in the next item as well, so I don't know if you want me to talk about it now or wait.
Well, I guess the question is, could you use it for the cameras?
I, I don't think we can, because what the, what the DOJ says is you can't use it for budgeted items, and you already budgeted this for me a year ago, although I haven't spent the money yet. So, it's kind of a legal question. We might, we both might be partially right. So, and, but if I spend it on this, then I can't, I might as well not talk about the next item, because we won't have enough money for the next item.
Yeah. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, we, we didn't budge, or budget for the vest cameras. Would the use, could we use that money for the vest cameras, then?
The body-worn cameras are a lot, I can't remember what they were. Do you have a, do you have a current bid on body cameras?
No, not an official bid, probably a little over a hundred-and-fifty-thousand bucks at least. Not including the storage.
Would those share the same storage?
Yeah, they share the same, well, you'd need a lot more storage.
Right, but they could share the same. More cameras, more storage. But if we were able to use them for the body armor cameras and then the storage, it would be a mutual benefit for everybody at this point, right?
You know, I, I'm, the jury's out for me on body-worn cameras for a couple reasons. One, they, it's not like the cop show. It's put your camera on a string and swing it around, and that's your, that's the kind of video you're going to have in court. There's a lot of police departments that have gone to them and have quit using them because they can't afford the storage of all of that data. And I personally think in the next ten years, we're going to be mandated to go to them. We might as well wait and see if they're going to bring some money along with that, because they are very expensive, and then every five years, we have to replace them. So that's a, that's a pretty big crack.
Councilmember Hamdul.
Well, to follow up on that, you still want to be settled tonight on this one. Each one's going to be separate. Where the funds come from will be two separate agencies.
Correct.
Then I'd go ahead and move the recommendation.
I want to comment from city manager. I'm sorry.
Well, I hate interrupting a movement to approve that.
Should've turned your light off, then.
Yeah, no kidding. I'd only known. I, I just wanted to say that these cameras and body cameras are two different issues. Chief touched on just some of the concerns. I have some other concerns about body-worn cameras as well. We can get with those another time, but it is same type of storage, but additional storage and additional expense. That, that part being aside, I, I've been steadfast in my support of making sure we get dashboards, get computers online with the units, be able to keep track of, of our officers out in the field and be able to respond to them and back them up with, with quick notice, and then be able to, to, to have the tools to be able to prove out some of our cases and chases. So, I just wanted to say, I recommend your approval here, and we'll, we'll no doubt be picking up the discussion of, of the body-worn cameras at another, at another time.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just one other question here. How come we cannot use the impact fee resources for a hundred percent of this?
Well, because impact fees are for additional new coverage and expenses as opposed to equipping. This is upping the equipment of our current force.
Councilmember Mosby?
I was getting ready to second councilmember Hamdul.
Okay, councilmember Mos, or councilmember Hamdul.
Yeah, the reason I moved is to support this, because I was supportive when it first came before us, a year or two that you needed it. And I've seen a lot of programs and a lot of things have shown where that body camera does work out of the camera, so that's why I was very much supportive.
Are you, are you making a motion?
Yeah. That's my motion to do staff's recommendation.
Okay, and I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Let's vote. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. That passes. Stay there. Chief, we're going on to item number ten. This is request for, request to use asset forfeiture funds to purchase an armored rescue vehicle and adopt Resolution six-zero-three-eight, parentheses, sixteen. Chief Walsh.
So, it's a pretty long staff report. I'm going to summarize it as well. So what I would like to do is start with what we currently have, and what we have is, is an armored personnel carrier from nineteen-seventy-eight. You won't see a picture of it tonight, because when we went to move it out of the garage to take a picture, it wouldn't start. And it's, it's, an APC is made to put eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-old soldiers in it and move it around, and if it gets hit by an IED or RPG, it's configured to try and deflect some of that. It's not made for police work. I can't put my SWAT team in it. Matter of fact, you, you put all that gear on, try and get into the thing, it's kind of difficult. They actually help each other into the vehicle. It's difficult to drive. You have to stick your head out in the wind. It's kind of cool to drive, but it's, it's very difficult to drive if you want to be safe. You got to be down. You look through a little slit in the window. It scares me to death that we drive it around in that configuration. It was really made for off-road in a war zone, not made for urban environment. It's armor, and armor's supposed to stop bullets. That's a picture of a military one. We don't have all the doodads and the, and the machine guns on top, but that's what we have. And, you know, if you're standing in between the wheels there to put armor between you and, and somebody with a rifle, they could shoot you from the knee down, and that, you're going to be taken out of, out of the equation there if you get shot. Armor needs to go down so that you can get behind it. You can't really rescue anybody. If you rolled up on that, hopefully you wouldn't run them over, because you can't see, but then you got to get out of that vehicle, push them back up in there, and that's three feet off the ground, and it's just not doable. It's, it's not, that little door comes down, and if you don't pay attention, you'll drop it on somebody's head, and it's all armored. It really is a heck of a heavy door, so I'm not real impressed with this vehicle. It's a great museum piece. It's not a rapid deployment vehicle. If you go fifty miles an hour, it's scary. We, we did a search warrant on the MS-13 case for San Maria about a month ago, and, and I've done thousands of entries as a narcotics officer, and, and some pretty scary ones, too. That was probably the scariest one in my career I've ever seen, and we did it without a piece of armor. We had to do it, and those guys were bad guys, and the guy we went after was a shooter and a murderer, and so I was a little frustrated that I didn't have a piece of armor for my SWAT team. I would love to, so that's what we have now. That, to me, is a military vehicle. Can you, can you put the next one up? Just so you know what we're talking about. That's it. It's a, it's a, it's a piece of armor. It's a rescue vehicle, but it's a piece of armor. Everything's armored, and you could shoot at that all day long and sit inside, and, you're going to be okay. It'll take fifty caliber rounds, which nobody has fifty calibers. If they do, it could take it. What this does, it allows us to move a, a team, a SWAT team or narcotics team into a location. You see all the tensions there. We could put all of our equipment in there. It's actually made to carry all that weight. It's carrying a lot of weight already. We have two ambulances we got from the military when they, when they phased out of the military, and we have rifles and cases of ammo and heavy equipment in it. We have no business driving those, those ambulances with all that weight in it. This vehicle can take the weight. And it allows us to, to go to a situation, put it between the house and us if we have a hostage negotiation going on, and we could slow everything down. And that's, that's the, that's, that's the key. My, any, any SWAT commander would tell you, or any chief would tell you, all calls, what we want to do is reach, reach a negotiated peace, and this allows us the ability to get up close and personal, behind cover, even inside of it. We've negotiated over the phone in Portland, sitting inside, looking in the window of the house with the guy with the rifle. We've used these vehicles to roll up on people that are shot and down and pick them up and scoop them and go, and that includes citizens, that includes police officers, and quite frankly, a guy named Dow shot and killed my friend in Portland, and we went and rescued him with that vehicle right there, with a vehicle just like that. So it's, we can rescue suspects, too. And that's the, that's our job. Our job is to rescue people. I could give you story after story about that. I won't bore you with that, but I make no apologies that I want an armored vehicle. It's really important that you know that I'm not here to ask for a toy. I'm not asking for a toy. I'm asking for a piece of equipment. And I, I get it, it's a lot of money, but we seized a lot of money, and this is kind of, in my opinion, this is a one-shot opportunity to take that amount of money and buy something like this. There's a lot of other technology that we can spend this money on. I get it. But if we have an active shooter or a terrorist attack or something, I, I want to be able to go in the back of that police station right there, jump in that thing, and get busy and, and get over to whatever needs help. I, I had the privilege of listening to the San Bernardino Police Chief and the sheriff and the agent in charge from the FBI of the San Bernardino shooting, and these things were critical. And it was the police officers that went in and got people and brought them to the triage for the firefighters to work on them. So, it's just important. I'm your police chief. My job is to keep the community safe, and I know I'm asking for a big amount of money that we have sitting in an account, and, and I don't think just because we seized it, we should be able to spend it, but if we're going to spend it, we ought to spend on something that we just are never going to budget for. So, I am available for questions. Again, Captain Lardner is my SWAT commander, and he did a tremendous amount of research, and so he's available for technical questions as well.
You know, Chief, if I'm a bad guy and you pull up in front of my house with that first one, I'm going to throw my hands.
It does look kind of ominous.
If you pull up with this thing, I'm going to...
You'll probably order milk.
Anyway. Okay. Councilmember Vega?
Chief, with this vehicle, in the case of, heaven forbid, you know, we have multiple shootings in a school or an auditorium or something here, I mean, would this vehicle be a deterrent? And would you consider that an asset if we were to ever have something like that from another city? I mean, would that actually get us more prepared?
Yeah, I think so. It has all, it has all the equipment in it. It has armor. We could drive straight over chain link fences and get right up to the buildings. We could put it between the kids and shooters and... put it between the kids and shooters, and it could, it can go down the freeway at a good clip. So.
It's be a great preventative, preventative measure for our city.
I think so.
In case we had some sort of a catastrophe happen. Like I say again, heaven forbid that we ever have something, but at least we're not sitting there like sitting ducks.
I, yeah, I, yes. The answer is yes. And just so you know, I have done some research. I've talked to Ralph Martin from San Maria, the police chief there. I've talked to the sheriff. And we nego, we talked about how can we get armor to pieces of, you know, parts of the county? We're kind of an island here. You know, there is armor in San Maria, and there is armor in San Barbara, but it's not going to do us any good if something happens, you know, down the street here.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Counselor Mosby.
You've got in the report here approximately $200,000 for the cost on this. And I was going online and looking, and the ones that I saw that were 50 caliber capable were around the $300,000 mark. Is, do you have something? Approximate, I mean, what are we looking, I mean, it'd be pretty solid at 200?
This is the Kia model. This isn't the Mercedes. If you want to see a really expensive one, you can go to San Barbara City or San Maria. They bought, I think it's called a Larenco?
Lenko.
Lenko. But it's, it's good. It'll do. It's, you know, the MRAP, which is a bigger machine that the military uses, is $775,000. We can get one of those for free right now, but it's, again, three feet off the ground. It's going to destroy.
What's the right-of-way maintenance cost on that one?
I don't know. Yeah.
$200,000 a mile, I hear.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just, my curious, you're pretty solid with that $200,000. I mean, the approximate, I mean, you're pretty.
Yes, sir. If we go to the manufacturer and pick it up ourselves, absolutely. Otherwise, they want to charge us little of $9,000 for delivery.
Where did you have to go?
It's going to be.
I saw some of these in Nigeria.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay. I saw some in Nigeria for sale. I wanted to see how far you were going, but.
This is an MRAP that weighs, it starts at about 43,000 pounds for the stripped-down version of metal armor-wise I'm talking about. And one, from what I'm looking at here, is about 63,000 to 69,000 pounds. We can get them for free, but we're running into the same problem, like the chief said, that we already have. Getting something that's not going to be, it's not going to work on our city streets, and Mr. Bean won't be happy when we start busting lines, water lines, sewer lines, due to the weight of this thing.
I just wanted to confirm the $200,000 mark because you did say approximate. I didn't, but I got you.
Yes.
I'm old, we're going to take out that big celery you got.
Absolutely.
Anything above, right?
You got it.
Okay.
Okay. Public comment.
John Lynn, historian on our existing armored car. We went to San Maria and picked it up at no cost to the city and brought it back, and police officers refurbished it. It was given to us, and it was better than nothing because we had nothing. Now we have an opportunity to have something that will really do the job. So I support the chief and his effort. I would love to be able to spend that money somewhere else. But, you know, we had an active shooting a while back, and that would have been pretty golden. And I'm sure it's going to happen again. So I don't know what we're going to do with the old one, but maybe we can make some museum money out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Jane Bear. Here again, I am not arguing against having a rescue vehicle. I would, I guess, wonder why can't we get the cheaper one where it doesn't stop 50-cal bullets? Because I don't think anybody has 50-cal bullets around here. So, you know, again, I think that, I think that it's worth thinking about. And the reason is because maybe you do want a rescue vehicle. Maybe you could get one for 180. Maybe you could get one for 150. And because not everyone knows what is in the packets that I gave you, I just want to read a couple other things that you could do with this money. You could use it for reward money, to encourage people to turn in criminals. You could use it for the improvement of law enforcement or detention facilities. You could use it for all sorts of other high-tech toys that would help the police officers do their jobs. You could use it for 9/11, 911 call center equipment. You could use it as matching funds for a grant, which would leverage the money. So you could get a grant for a million dollars and have that much more money in the police officer's budget. So leveraging the money seems like a really good idea. You could hire a grant writer with that money to write the grant, to use the matching funds to leverage the money. You could use it for drug and gang education and other awareness problem, awareness programs. You could support community-based programs. I found it interesting. You could actually have a budget of 25, up to $25,000 a year that you could give to any community-based organization that was working with law enforcement on gang problems, on, you know, keeping kids employed so they don't get into trouble. So that's another substantial use. Again, I don't, I don't know about the rescue vehicle, but I know that 50-cal is excessive. I was on the USS Cimarron in the Gulf during the first Gulf War, and it was an oiler. It was 600 feet long, and that was our top capacity, the, you know, 50-cal weapons. But I know what those look like, and I know that nobody in Lompoc has them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, bring it back to the council. Counselor Mosby.
Question for the captain or chief, both. How many other vehicles did you look at? I mean, how, you probably have the magazine in your.
There are two primary manufacturers in America. One is Lenko, which is what Santa Barbara Police Department has. That's the, that's the high end. That's the luxury vehicle that can run into 300, 400, $500,000. Then there's the Armored Group, which is the other organization who has a very similar vehicle. They're, it depends on what options you get on them. They're both minimum rated at 50 caliber. You go up from there. So you can get more armored if you choose to. The minimum is 50 caliber. So, and then there's Oshkosh, which is foreign, and they're more of a Humvee-type of vehicle that is a four or five-passenger vehicle, that type of a body stop, more of like a Jeep-looking vehicle with big tires on it.
Which is a little more tactical. This is more rescue.
Yes, this is more rescue. This has more doors. You're able to open the doors in the back and actually grab people and pull them in. You can put skirts on the sides, bullet-resistant skirts. You're able to stand up in the center and actually look out if you have to. LED lights, a lighting system where you're able to light up, for example, we had the shooting over on, I think it was Poppy, 500 block of Poppy, where you're able to light up an entire area with these types of vehicles, with the Oshkosh. And there's a couple of other armored vehicle companies in America, but they produce vehicles that are like a Suburban. You know, you want to up-arm your Cadillac or your limousine, something like the Beast, like what the president drives around in. Those type of organizations are out there that beef up regular vehicles. And there's only a couple out there that actually produce vehicles that are made for law enforcement. And that's Lenko and Armored Group.
Dave, thank you. Counselor Starbuck.
I'm just going to make a couple of comments here. You know, a lot of people are intimidated with law enforcement riding around in armored personnel carriers or rescue vehicles that can withstand 50-cal fire. There comes the need, and, you know, you look, we've had arson '78, and we've used it this many times in here. I'm kind of wondering, you know, when we do our capital improvement plan, is there another way to spend that money on something that is going to be proposed in the capital improvement plan? But on the other hand, I know that we've approved a brush truck for the fire department. And it's something we don't need in the city limits. We don't have brush. We don't have the need for it. So I understand why we would need it. Fire never let me drive the brush trucks. I don't guess I'll ever get to drive the armored personnel rescue vehicle either, but.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of in a tour mode here.
Oh, yeah, you will.
You ready to make a motion yet?
Does it give machine guns on it?
No, I'm very pleased with the information that was received. I was reading through there about what you do have, and I thought you were going to try and fix that one up there leaking all over the place. It's environmental concerns. We chasing you all over this town. I think leaks is bad as what it says in your report. And I also believe that you would have looked at all kinds of places and some of the best deals are, and this fits the project. It fits what we need here in town. We don't really need it all the time, but we need it when we need it, and if we're going to help set it out in San Maria or somebody else. Like with our fire trucks, look, they've been everywhere. We don't use them here. But there is brush inside the city limits of Lompoc, not as much as some people think it is. But your fire, your rig is going to be doing what it should be and help others. So we'll be in contact with other individuals. So the idea of looking, finding the best price, finding what's going to fit, what you need, and it's going to help Lompoc. And I'll move that we second your recommendation.
Okay. Do you mind if I take the city manager's comment first?
Man, you know, my timing's horrible tonight. Chief, were you, if I remember right, were you with LA Sheriff's back or LA?
LA Sheriff, yes.
Just was at the time, and I don't know, maybe Captain Mariani remembers as well. There was a bank heist, basically, in LA, and there was an absolute war zone that developed. Do you, either of you remember?
Yeah, it's a Hollywood, a Hollywood shooting.
Do you remember that incident?
Oh, absolutely. And Captain Mariani.
What's the highest level of cali, what's the highest caliber of weaponry that was used in that?
You know, we revamped our whole method of arming officers after that. And I had an officer who had worked for me, who was pensioned off of that, and I was explaining earlier at the restaurant, he was shot, and we couldn't get to him. And what they had to do was they improvised, they put vests on a car and took it in to go rescue him.
Yeah.
Among other people. But it changed, we had officers running to gun stores. And after that is when we started seeing police departments using urban rifles. And that's why now it's commonplace to see, you know, officers armed with urban rifles for that kind of occurrence. And the world's changed a lot since 1978 and 1979. We used to use those armored vehicles, basically, to go into rock houses that were fortified, not so much to rescue folks. But nowadays, it's just, it's just a darn need. And that shooting, like I said, changed our primary weapons, the use of urban rifles, and it also brought on the nuance or the trend to use armored vehicles and rescue vehicles.
That event, basically, if I could characterize it, it awoke us from our naivete.
Right.
Because we were absolutely overwhelmed by the bad guys.
Absolutely. And when you have officers running to gun stores to get rifles and to get, I mean, it just changed a whole lot.
Right. So do we have a way to keep those sorts of weaponry? Do you have a checkpoint at the border here in Lompoc that keeps that sort of weaponry out of the city?
No.
I, I got you.
So.
You know, I just want to say, you know, it's, I'm not buying this or asking you to buy it for the 50 caliber. I mean, our ballistic vests, you know, we, there's different levels of ballistics vests, and I got to be honest with you, I wish I had a lower level so that it wasn't so uncomfortable. But they don't, they just have, they make this truck. They don't make levels of trucks. So I don't think there's anything lower in cost. This is the lowest-cost armored truck we could buy.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the statement. I'm serious about a lot of things, but particularly about a couple of things as it relates to public safety in that. I believe in officer safety, and I think this is an important element of officer safety. And I think, you know, it's more than just the care for my kids when I talk about officer safety. I mean, it's for the colleagues that stand in the gap. And for, as to the message it sends, I do believe in its peacekeeping capability because I do believe that a show of strength is sometimes what can best keep the peace. And as the chief said, you may choose to approve or not approve the purchase, but I would just encourage you, don't let it be over some concern about appearance or a message that we're sending because of too much of a show of strength. I make no apologies about sending a message to the bad guys that were serious. And I make no apologies, as I stated before, as chief has stated before, about having the ability in the case and the unfortunate and hopefully unlikely scenario that we're ever faced with what they were faced in San Bernardino, that we're able to respond and protect and take a shooter out. And I just, the more I look at what's going on around the country today, the more I see the value of an investment like this. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second, then I'll go to Counselmember.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Counselor Mosby, you had a comment.
Well, I was going to second it, but cut me out. But I did want to ask for just a minor amendment to the resolution that it just added the, some of the verbiage or the verbiage from the second paragraph on page 5 of 6, where we have the statement as made in there that it just says that the LPD policy will prohibit the use of the vehicle for peaceful protest. The vehicle may be utilized during violent crowd control situations, since the vehicle is intended to safely transfer and protect emergency police medical personnel during incidents involving potential threats of violence. So I'd like to see that added into the resolution. It doesn't change the character of it, but it puts in there to just fortify the statements as made by the manager and the chief and such. So with both your guys' permission.
I agree.
Counselor Vega.
Any more? That's, that's it, man. I'm easy.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Madam Clerk, read in communication. Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, bring it back to the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Counselmember Vega.
Nothing really to report, but this has been a really stressful week. I want you to know that.
Yeah.
Oh, the only thing I have, I'm sure glad to see the corner of motion H finally shredded. It makes good, and what we were going to talk about tonight, the number of different places that are going to be shredded in the next 60 days. Just hope it happens. But that was one of the best things I seen in the last week is getting that corner clean.
Counselor Mosby.
I do have two minor council requests. One is a request for, as I found out, reading through the study and the answer to my questions about the, what do we call it, the non-rate revenue, money for the electric enterprise? I'd like to have staff do a presentation on that so we can learn some more about that because I was, as I was walking around and talking to some people, they didn't know it existed. So I'd just like to see some explanation of that, a little presentation on that. And as well as one of my items that I've been looking into. So, I mean, that's the first one, I guess. So I need a second on that one and a third.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Okay.
And that, and then the other one, in my investigations and looking at certain items, we had a Resolution 588, parentheses 14, which was about some of the rate increases that went through primarily, this was an LS-1 rate, as it was called, which is a streetlight rate. And I was trying to find out the matching and the mating of the, what was presented to staff in the resolution that is finalized. And I'm seeing, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to the conclusion how they got, and it seems like there's a little bit of, a few dots are missing. But I would just like us to be able to revisit that, and if that could come before the council so we can see what this, what, basically what happened is was the LED lights that we went through and how the rate went from a certain dollar amount to basically tripling through this resolution. And I'm not sure. amount to basically tripling through this resolution. And I'm not sure that all the methodology was put there, so we could have a presentation to connect and fill the gaps between that.
Would that tie in with the previous request?
Um, there's some tie-in, yes.
Could we do it all at once?
I believe so. I, Mr. Wilkie would be doing the presentation, I'm assuming.
Either myself or Melinda, probably, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll give them a third.
Okay, so they're your second and third, both agreed to tie it in altogether.
Right, okay.
With that, nothing else?
I have no reports.
Okay. And I have no reports, other than I did walk in the, what was it? The Walk Relay for Life. So that was very enjoyable. And that is it. So if there's nothing else, this Lompoc City Council meeting is adjourned to a joint meeting of, with the Human Services Commission at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 7th, right here at City Hall. Good night, and thank you.